Hmm.
Not a bad idea, but. I don't know, it does feel kind of free.
Alright. Okay, let me unmute us. We good to go? Hi, good evening everybody, uh welcome to the select board meeting of June eighth, twenty twenty one. Uh we've got a full complement of the board here tonight, Courtney Fresha, Jim Salvi. Unlike Jim Salvi, where did that come from? Jim Salvi. Zach Burns, Megan Birch-McMichael and myself, Ellen Sturges. And um just wanted, before we open for public comment, just want to remind people if you could identify yourself, um if you have something to say, raise your hand or physically or uh with a Zoom tool, use, raise your hand. And if you would just, just like at town meeting, say your name and and your address would be really helpful. Um it looks like we have a lot of people, so just please keep it to no more than two or three minutes. And um if it's on the agenda, uh I'd ask that you wait until the agenda item and we will definitely give you a chance to talk then after the board has had their chance. So, um with that, is there a public comment?
Madam Chair, I have a parliamentary inquiry.
Yes.
Uh Madam Chair, I timely requested for an agenda item, a pride proclamation to be placed on the agenda for this meeting. I do not see this agenda item listed on the agenda today, and I'd like to know why it was not included on the agenda.
Um as I was gonna mention later, I uh talked with the town administrator and we wanted to have a fuller discussion with the full board in our planning around the kind of proclamations that we might be offering throughout the year. So I didn't feel there had been no precedent for doing it on the select board and we felt that it would be better to have that discussion broader before we start talking about a specific one.
Uh Madam Chair, I have another parliamentary inquiry.
Yeah.
M- Madam Chair, respectfully, this is not what you said to me regarding your decision. And this is very uncomfortable to say, but I think it's important that we have open and honest dialogue here. You mentioned to me that we're not a social justice organization, that if every month as you suggested, we announce a proclamation for Black history, women's history, et cetera. To me, which is you, it makes all less meaningful and supports the select board image's figureheads. Madam Chair, respectfully, this statement makes clear that you rejected the proposed agenda item because you personally disagreed with the item. Madam Chair, at the last meeting, the consensus was that the chair is a more ceremonial role and then this person who runs the meeting. A successful chair needs the support of the board members and needs to keep in mind the chair does not speak for the board. Respectfully, I believe you tried to speak for the board in this decision. Madam Chair, although open meeting law may provide the chair with certain rights, I thought the consensus of the board spoke otherwise. Respectfully, I would like to know why the chair believes she has the authority from the board to reject certain agenda items when timely requested by another select board member, not due to timing or the legitimate reasons, but rather due to personal disagreement with a policy.
Um you definitely misspeak, it's not personal issues. As I said, it, I felt there was a bigger issue about having a policy decision around doing proclamations. Uh you, you actually chose not to have a conversation with me before we posted the agenda. So I'm gonna move on and we can deal with it in a fut- future meeting. Are there other people who would like to speak? Yeah, Kelly? Can you identify yourself?
Hi, my name is Kelly Lawler. Um and I just wanted to, uh my name is Kelly Lawler, live at one seventy Hudson Road. I've lived in Stowe for seven years and I'm also a high school English teacher, not in our town, but in another town. And I just wanted to um read a quick um email that I sent to, to this board of select, uh the select board. And um it was in reference to an e- an email that I had sent um actually a year ago. So um and I know that not everyone on this board is the same people that were on this board a year ago. Um but I just wanted to say that it was about Juneteenth um and recognizing that um as a town day of observance. I'm, I'm very happy to see that on our agenda today. Um cause I did request that we make that kind of a procul- proclamation to memorialize um and recognize Juneteenth. Um you know, on our, on our town website, it says that Stowe is recognized as a place for growing up and a place for coming back to. And um you know, I certainly moved here um and with that kind of same regard in mind. And I want to feel welcomed, I want my students to feel welcome, I want my children to feel welcome in this town and I want everyone to, to be recognized. Um and I think it's the most simple thing that we can do at a local government level. Um and so I, I wanted to also, in my email, I, you know, I said, you know, very, very clearly, it's Pride Month. Um it is June, um and I was hoping that we could get a pride proclamation um on our agenda at some point um so that we could consider making that very important distinction to recognize and to not erase anyone in our community.
Thank you, Kelly. Anyone else? Okay, um just some announcements first, there's a lot going on this week. Oh, sorry, I see Hector. I see your hand up, can you?
Hi.
Right.
Yeah, thank you, I was soon to raise my hand. Um I also would like to emphasize the need to have a pride proclamation put on the agenda. I had heard that it was the sense that the board does not have any, um does not, is not a policy board, but a, takes care of the business of the town of Stowe and making social justice proclamations is not business of, for the board, which to me sounds counterintuitive because sometimes can be very loud. And the fact that the board of the town of Stowe has not made any proclamation supporting the diverse members of our community, whether it be the LGBTQ plus community, Black community, um or any other member of the diverse community, that we don't have any proclamation from the town board supporting them is a very loud policy statement of ignorance at best or uncaring at worst. Thank you.
Thanks Hector.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Courtney.
I'd like to make a comment.
Sure.
Um. I'm grateful that, to, to Kelly and Hector and Zach for speaking up on this issue. Um I'd just like to note that we are a newly reformed board and that we have brand new members, we have a new chair and we are in the process of getting to know each other again to figure out how we're going to work together. And um it's in my mind, a little early for us to just jump right out with something like this tonight. I think it's very important that we talk to each other about it. And I just think it's too soon for our new chair to respond to every request that might have not been responded to in the past. So thank you for keeping it on our list.
Alright, um so I just wanna, some announcements, um a lot going on. Randall Library is having a forum tomorrow night at six P M. Um all these have the information is on their we- on our website, I believe. Um so for the links, the Zoom links. Uh the Pride Rally and Parade is in Bolton this Sunday, starting at three o'clock. Uh I can't believe, I can't remember where the parade starts from, but it ends at the, the new Bolton Center. Is it at the school that the parade starts, do you know? Um S M O T, the Affordable Housing Trust, is having a public forum on their Red Acre property and their current plans and um asking for feedback. Um that's on Monday, June fourteenth, starting at six thirty. And then finally, um as people might have seen, the annual appointments are um up for about thirty different committees. So if you're interested, um there's a long list of committees on the website and we ask that you um make your uh request known if you're interested by June fifteenth next week.
Can I ask you a quick question about that?
Yes.
If the, uh are we only making appointments for vacancies? Or if somebody is currently on, like is it a vacancy because their time has expired?
These are annual.
Correct, so these are reappointments.
Right, so what, I guess what I'm saying is that, like if there is a reappointment, but someone else wants to come in first to do that. It doesn't mean that because that person has been doing that forever, that someone else can't come in and do it. Does that make sense?
I thought these were just annual appointments.
But are, this is like staff?
No, so this is, so this is mostly board and committee.
Okay.
Um I think I have a different opinion than some board members.
Okay.
My feeling is you either reappoint or you don't reappoint.
Okay.
Then if there are vacancies, we post those vacancies.
I see.
I don't know that that's how it's been interpreted. I think there's been a call for people to apply for any position.
Okay.
Um so there may be multiple people vying for seats that are being reappointed.
Okay.
Cause on the list, there's a number of vacancies and I presume that people could apply for those vacancies.
Oh, they absolutely could, but quite frankly, I would not include those in the reappointments cause those require separate new appointment and new dates. So I would give those separate, even if people apply during this time.
Okay.
I think the reappointments should be the reappointments.
Yep, okay, that makes sense.
And then anyone who applies that's not currently on a board, we would put forward to be formally appointed to the committee.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, I think the posting needs to be clarified then because it says, um these are appointments that expired June thirty with appointments currently holding these positions. If you're interested in any of these positions, send a letter of interest.
Oh no, it's still the same, I mean people can still send a letter of interest. So if we have people that wanna be, we currently have so many vacancies. Um unless like five people apply to the zoning board, um we have multiple vacancies on there. So we have room for new members and reappointments on many of our committees. I would just say that if they're new people, they would not be included in the reappointment list. They should be vetted as a new candidate for a position.
But on the same calendar?
It's still a July first, but it might not be for the next meeting, depending on when they apply.
Okay.
I see. Got it, okay.
Um I did ask at the request of Zach, uh we did put out that um reappointment candidates would, were invited to attend the next meeting in case there are questions or comments for candidates up for reappointment. So um that has been put out to all of the people seeking reappointments.
Yeah, I think that's definitely important when you have a new board. Cause there are people who have been doing it forever that I don't know, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
I think, if, if I could, I think this whole thing, I thought your question was great.
Mm-hmm.
Because how long have I been on this board and I was a little iffy. Um I happen to agree with Denise's answer, but I, I think this is a great thing to put in writing. It's very close to the thing we discussed at the last meeting before we reorganized about the whole appointment process. I really do think that we want it at some point, it's not on the agenda, to task the town administrator with putting something, taking our incredibly unclear advice and putting something in draft form, which is what she gets paid to do. And you know, so we can have something to talk about. But um I do think that this requires a little bit of clarification.
Yeah, yeah.
I find, personally, I find the idea of inviting a hundred and twenty-two people to come to our next meeting on a Zoom call a little bit awkward. I think we could smooth that out next year.
Mm-hmm.
But it's, you know, it's fine this year, but I, I do think this cries out for a policy.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Can I ask about something?
Yes.
Um I, you know, had a, had a good conversation and, and you know, I see the reappointment lists, but I also think about it as an appointment list. And so I would like to see that even if there's somebody on the position, if somebody's interested in that position, I'd love to see them still apply because I think there's creative, creative ways that the board, that we can operate to actually try to encourage non-voting members or whatever that may look like to try to bring more people in who may be interested in some of our uh commissions or committees that are just, you know, full because they're great committees, people love being on there, but also can learn and then hopefully uh take the place. I know on, on a couple of committees I've been on, you know, I, I hear people that have been doing it a while saying, I'd love for somebody to take my place. And so maybe we could try to incentivize that as well. So I'd hope that even if there are people listed and there's no space, that if you're interested to apply, cause I think that'd be very helpful for us to try to facilitate um those, those folks hopefully being, being engaged in our town.
I think, I think any of the boards and committees have associate members um in non-voting positions.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say that, I remember, um just to clarify, I was remembering that might not have been last year, I think it was the year before, that there was actually a contest for um, it was like Boone Commission. Um so it's the first time in my experience where there was a contest for an appointment and we had interviews in our meeting and made a choice.
Yes, Denise.
Yes.
Yeah, to that I would only say though, but then it gets back to the conversation of I have the recommending authority and if we're doing it all as a reappointment, we're, we're bypassing the vetting of these candidates for new seats. So we can certainly present candidates as part of the reappointment process, but I, I think we need to decide whether it's reappointment or whether it's full appointment and taking new candidates without the regular process that they would go through. So that's why I would view this as, these are your reappointments and other people are welcome to apply and if there are people that, there were vacancies or if there are people that are not reappointed, I just, I wanna be cautious that if you choose to not reappoint people, it's for the right reasons, not because there's someone else that wants to take their spot.
Yeah, yeah, oh yeah.
That if you, if you have valid issues with people not showing up or not participating, then that's absolutely accurate.
Right. Right.
And either way, I plan to do a, a larger recruitment after the appointment so that we have, cause we do have a ton of vacancies.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
That we can then put out something about all of the committees, what they do, kinda like the election um night um and really try and get some people involved.
Mm-hmm. I, I, one possibility, I don't know if this would work, is that we, any, if we do get people who are applying for a position that's already, you know, someone who also wants to be reappointed, that we don't say no to that person, but we also don't vote on it until we have a chance to talk to anybody who's interested.
Yeah, so the only thing I would say is, we just need to make sure that there's not an early July meeting that they would need for quorum.
Right.
That's the only thing to take into consideration.
Oh, of that committee.
But there's no, you don't have to appoint people by June thirtieth, we could do it at the first July meeting if need be.
Right. Okay. Okay. So, so we'll still encourage people to, if they're interested in any one of those committees. Obviously, you have to learn about the committees, hopefully from the website or from finding someone on the committee currently um and then get a, a letter of interest or email of interest to the town administrator by next, by June fifteenth.
Question?
Yes.
Sorry.
Yeah.
And we're uncomfortably into the substance here. I don't mean to perpetuate that. Is there a sense of the board that we're asking the town administrator to put her recommendation on this process in writing? And the only reason that I'm pushing this, appointments are a classic example of something, once you get past them, you forget about it.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't wanna do that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I, and you're pretty confident that there isn't a policy already written somewhere that might not have been found recently?
Confident that there's not one we can find easily.
Okay.
Uh.
I mean, I think, I agree, I think we absolutely should have clarification. And if, if now's the time to do it, then we, you know, at least start the drafting process, is that what you're suggesting?
Can I add, maybe we add this on your planning meeting?
Yeah.
That's what I was gonna say.
And discuss reappointments and appointments in general?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Cause there was the other appointment issue we wanted to talk about. So I think this might be a good planning item that we could add to the agenda.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll, we'll commit to that.
Yes.
Great, I will put that down.
Yeah.
Great. Um, and the only other chairman's comments was, or chair's comments was, um I wanted to actually plan that special meeting that we can do, a planning session, just a workshop basically, um with no other agenda items. And I was looking at, just to do it sooner than later, at a Tuesday that's not one of our regular scheduled meetings. So I will uh follow up with a doodle or something, ask Joyce maybe to email everybody for, I'm looking at June twenty-ninth or July sixth, if those are possible dates. And then if those don't work, we'll move on and find another date in July. Cause I know it's starting to get into vacation season and who knows what, so. Um but I think it's good, I, you know, I think we all agreed from our last meeting that it would be great to have a work plan this year and the sooner we get working on it, the better, so. Um is there any other announcements or things from the board? Okay, so we have to wait till seven thirty for the public hearing?
A few minutes.
I'm sorry?
Can we do minutes? Or no?
Go ahead.
May I ask that you take the conservation restriction?
Yeah, I think, I think we should be able to get the, um.
No.
So um the conservation restriction for one seventy-two Harvard Road, I saw Susan Crane, hi Susan. Former colleague, nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
So um I, I will just start, start by saying, um so this is a conservation restriction um that Nancy Shepherd, um who lives at one seventy-two Shepherd, uh one seventy-two Harvard, um is um offering to the Stowe Conservation Trust. Get the dog. Um, no problem. Um we, the Stowe, uh the town is not gonna hold any role in this. I actually had to get this clarified by three different people because I just wanted to make sure we weren't, it wasn't anything that we're gonna, we're not the backup. Um it's a great thing that, that Nancy is willing to, to put a C R on her property, um but it is, it's part of master to law that says, you know, belt and suspenders, the town has to approve this, even though we have no official role on it. So with that, Susan, do you wanna add anything to uh, to this, the C R information?
Sure, um I just wanna introduce myself, um Susan Crane, I'm the Vice President of the Stowe Conservation Trust, one twenty-two Cookman Drive in Stowe. Um Nancy Shepherd is on with us tonight.
Oh, she is, okay.
Um she is very generously donating six and a half acres on her horse farm property next to her seventeenth century house that many of you know, I hope, on the corner of Highly Brook and Harvard Road. Um I know you've got a really busy meeting, so I wanna know from you what you wanna hear. Um your task is to consider whether this is in the public interest. And under the statute, conservation, historic preservation, watershed preservation, agricultural preservation are all um topics that please consider. And they're all here in this C R, which you have a copy of. We are um just thrilled at the Stowe Conservation Trust that Nancy is donating this and think it's terrific. Um we went before the Conservation Commission and they looked at this pretty carefully and voted um to, not only to approve it, well, to recommend approval um by the Board of Selectment, but they voted that it certainly was um in the interest of conservation in Stowe. So we need your notarized signature on this so that we can get the E E A Secretary's signature and get this recorded. And um Nancy and I are here to discuss the conservation values, to answer any questions or um to have you nod and say it's terrific, we'll sign.
Um Nancy, do you wanna add anything? We'll see if she, I see her, her name, but I don't see her voice. I, I will just say that Tom and Nancy together uh basi- oh, there she is.
Can you, can you hear my?
Yep, yes. Hi Nancy.
Hi, everybody. And uh I am, I think the only thing that I would really like to say is I'm uh knowing that none of my children are interested in uh moving in back into this house, although that might not have anything to do with it anyway. Of the time when I will no longer be around and that this property will be um, you know, coming to be sold for the next owner. Um to, to me, the most important part of all the twenty-three pages or whatever is that nobody could, the biggest restriction is there could be no building on the land. So somebody couldn't buy the property and then, you know, put up X number of houses. That it can remain um open for people to enjoy. Um and so I, I hope that it will get passed so that we can commute to have this open land for the enjoyment of everybody in town. There are other things, you know, but that's the most important one for me.
Thank you Nancy, I was starting to say that Tom and Nancy have been leaders in conservation for well beyond the years I've been here. Um and I think you get credit for a lot of the early days of Stowe Conservation Trust's work, um for the town forest protection, if I'm not mistaken. So Nancy, this is just another step in the generosity that you and Tom have shown to Stowe, um extremely grateful. Um does the board have any questions or comments?
I'm strongly, strongly in favor of accepting this conservation restriction.
Oh yes, um I am too, and thankful.
Same.
I knew this property.
Same, and I wanna associate myself with your comments, which I thought you said very well. Nancy and Tom have been keystones of this town, especially in the conservation area.
Yeah.
So thank you.
Yes. Alright, I will accept a motion. If there's, oh, I guess I should ask if there's any, any comments from anybody else? Or Susan, do you have any final thoughts before we vote on this?
Um Nancy mentioned X houses, we think that this property could probably sustain three houses. It would change that beautiful scenic historic corner of Stowe more than I can even imagine. And I am so grateful to Nancy. And I imagine Tom gave some thought to this too before he ever, um, while he was alive. And I, I just think it's a wonderful amenity for the town and I am so pleased to hear the positive responses from all of you, so thank you.
Great. Yeah, and the historic value as well.
Yeah.
Being with the old west school across the street, but just with Tom and Nancy's house. I mean, to have that buffer around it is also really important um for that, the, the value it brings and highlights the house, so. Okay, so now I will accept a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the select board approve and sign a conservation restriction for a six point four four nine acre parcel located at the corner of Harvard Road and Highly Brook Road donated by Nancy H. Shepherd. Conservation restriction as described in the agreement presented at the meeting on June eighth, twenty twenty-one is to be held by the Stowe Conservation Trust.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Thank you again, thank you Susan, thank you Stowe Conservation Trust, thank you Nancy.
Thank you Nancy.
Thank you Nancy.
Thank you.
Thank you Susan.
Thanks, everyone.
Great. Okay, so we have a few minutes to kill, so why don't we do minutes? Um I guess we just start going in order. Uh the May twenty-fifth meeting, May fif- twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. Any other changes or comments on those minutes?
Are the minutes the ones that were sent seconds or the one that I think you added an update?
Yes, well, all, I think, are these the ones that I added the um?
Then I think we're gonna.
You added two names to the minutes.
Is that on this one with, then with Dr. um Cross was here?
Yes. Oh, right, yes.
I just wanted to be noted that he was here.
Perfect, yep, that's on there.
Yep.
Um if there's no, I will take a motion to accept.
Um I move that we accept the minutes of May twenty-five, twenty twenty-one, I think would be as drafted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, alright. Alright, let's do one more. Um May twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. This is at our pre-town meeting meeting, any other comments? I will take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the minutes of the May twenty-two, twenty twenty-one open session meeting.
Second.
As drafted.
Any comments, all in favor?
I have a, just a statement, which is just that I approve these in context, but not in substance, cause it wasn't important.
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry? Cause you were, you were not, um, thank you. Um sorry, let's just do the, the vote again one more time. All in favor?
Yep.
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, great. Unanimous, okay. Hmm, well, I guess we'll just keep going.
And Madam, Madam Chair, if, if I could just say that that's gonna be the same for the rest of the meeting, that minutes, that way I don't have to say anything.
Yes. Yeah, that's right, that's right, that's right. Well, I think most of us are gonna say that actually.
Well, that for anything.
So the next one, um for um May eighteen, two thousand seventeen.
No, of May eleven, twenty twenty-one.
Eleven.
Oh, sorry, and this May eleven, oh, it's cause it was double sided, sorry, right. Any comments on the May eleventh, twenty twenty-one meeting? If not.
Challenging, challenging meeting, thanks to Joyce.
Yes, just, yeah, that is it, she is, yep. Um I will take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the minutes of the May eleventh, twenty twenty-one meeting as drafted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. And okay, so now, now we're getting into two thousand seventeen, May eighteen, two thousand seventeen. Um I, is, were any of it, I'm gonna get to the right ones, was anybody here?
Um Jim was.
Jim gets this.
Aye.
Do we each need to say this statement and then go forward? Um you certainly, you don't need to, cause you can read them and approve them, but you can certainly state that if you'd like to.
Okay. Okay.
I could just, we could maybe even make it as part of the motion, that all members present, with the exception of Mr. Salvi. Uh.
And even him, if he doesn't remember.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, these were definitely topics relevant at the time, but that's about all there is at all.
Okay, so with that, Jim, would you like to make a motion?
Um so the added language is in context?
Uh.
Not substance.
Right. Based on context, not substance, we have read the minutes, it's, it's on the, the sheet of minutes, it says, um.
I tried to come up with something that would allow.
We have read the minutes and approve them based on context, not substance.
Substance of the meeting, but the context of the minutes.
Okay. Okay, um just wondering whether that really constitutes an approval of the minutes, but you think it does?
Yeah, cause you're approving just the minutes, you're not approving what happened at the meeting, you're just approving that the minutes are a.
Yeah, we're reading the record.
The minutes of the. You approve of the minutes themselves, not what took place at the meeting.
Thank you, that dis- that distinction I get.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Without understanding, uh Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes of the May eighteen, twenty seventeen meeting in to- in context and not the substance of the matters discussed and decided at that meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, unanimous, let's just see if we can knock another one off, April twenty-fifth.
May I recommend you do both the twenty-fifth and February twentieth at the same time?
Okay.
That works.
Just, cause at this point.
It's the same thing.
This is, okay, sure.
You ready for motion?
Yes, please.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes of April twenty-fifth, twenty seventeen and February twenty-eighth, twenty seventeen in context and not the substance of the matters discussed and, and voted on at those meetings.
Second.
All in favor? Alright.
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. This, this concludes our two thousand seventeen review.
Um yes, we, we do have some on the executive session that you'll have to review that go back, but that will clean us up.
Okay. Right, great.
So.
Which is after we were told previously that we were cleaning.
Which is after we were told previously that we were cleaned up.
That we were, thought we were cleaned up, right, yes. So, I think I will move to the public hearing, um, being that it is almost seven thirty. It's inches away, uh, do I have to wait for the exact?
No, you can start the proceedings.
All right, um, so, uh, the, I'm gonna read the notice, uh, the Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, June eighth at seven thirty P M in the Warren Room of the Town Building, three eighty Grape Road, Stowe, Mass. On the application of Dover Speed Shop LLC, Jared Spence, three seventy Hudson Road, Stowe, Massachusetts, oh one seven seven five for a Class Two used car dealer's license under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter one forty, Sections fifty-seven to fifty-nine as amended. Persons wishing to be heard on this matter will be afforded the opportunity but must participate, we assume. What, what, the process here, I'm gonna ask Dover Speed to speak first and then um ask if the board has questions, and I will call on a butters if they're present. Just make sure you identify yourselves um before you speak, but if you could raise your hand either with your camera or with the, uh, the icon at the bottom of your screen. So, um.
Can I, can I, can I ask folks to mute themselves if they're not speaking, otherwise I will do that.
Yes. Okay, yeah, um.
Introductions.
If you could, um, you could mute yourself, please, so we can uh not get too much background noise, thank you. And Jared, is that you with Dover Speed, I assume?
Yes, uh, my name is Jared Spence, nice to meet you guys.
Great, uh, welcome, thank you for joining us, and uh, why don't you just give us a, an overview of what you're asking for?
Yes, absolutely, and I just wanted to introduce my partner, Anton Milkjanda, who's here as well, um, as they am. But, uh, yep, so what I'm proposing is a dealer's um license for the property at three seventy Hudson Road. And I find sell um classic cars, strictly fif- nineteen fifties to nineteen seventies, um, classics and whatnot. And basically, I'm not changing anything on the property, but would like to obtain a dealer's license so that it makes the titling process easier for myself. Whereas, as of right now, um, you know, I have to register each car in the state of Massachusetts, and then it takes, you know, months on end to receive a title from the car in which I purchase, as well as having to pay um sales tax as well. So, as I'm trying to run my business successfully, it would make it much easier in the future to have a dealer's license, so that only the paperwork can, you know, be completed at a much quicker pace and as well as saving, saving costs.
And.
Um, with that, with that being said, um, it was agreed to have only ten cars on the property that will be stored um in parking spots and inside the building, so we have applied for um the number of ten vehicles. And six will be stored outside in a certified lot, with four um being stored indoors.
Um, we did note, uh, actually, one of our members, uh, Ms. Fretsch uh pulled up the special permit from nineteen eighty-nine, um, that was when, it was for more repair work. Are you gonna be doing repair work as well? Not that that's, that's not part of this license, but just for information sake?
Uh. Um, very, very minimal, but, but no, mostly not.
Uh, does your partner wanna hap- does you wanna add anything, Anton, I'm sorry, Milkjanda?
Uh. Anton? Sure, um, in addition to what Jared was saying, I think that um, one of the things as far as from an impact perspective, um you know, probably ninety to ninety-five percent of the business that, that we do um is via the internet. So, one thing I think that's important for not only the town, uh, but also for the butters to know is that what we are not proposing, um, and I know there has been a, a, a license granted at this location in the past. And that, uh, you know, once upon a time, it was more people coming to visit, going for test drives, um, and you know, traffic associated with this property. Um, since we acquired the property a few years ago, um, there, there is li- little to no traffic on the property. Um, ninety-five percent of the business that we do is nationally done um via the internet, so most of these buyers are finding the product on our website, and then it ships, so I think that's an important note for the town that there's, uh, you know, no noise, no interruption, no gatherings, no people coming and going. Uh, well, I share the business that we do is on the internet, and I just think especially for the butters, but also for the town to know that that's really what, what we do, and um, I think, you know, so that, that may answer some of the questions that, you know, people may have about how we operate the business.
Okay. Um, questions on the board?
I have a couple of questions, go for it.
Um, so you said you're not changing anything um on the property, um, are you, so you're not proposing putting up fencing, any kind of fencing?
Nope, that was not part of it.
Okay, um, and then, no outdoor lighting?
Nope.
Okay, um, and then you're not doing any, like, work on the building? Like, out, any kind of exterior work on the building that you're gonna be housing the cars in?
That's correct.
Okay. That's right, and then, oh, my other question is, um, I guess, I don't know that it matters what your hours of operation are if you're not having people on the property, but do you have hours of operation, or it really is just gonna be destroyed?
Yeah. Um, maybe. Eight, eight to five.
Eight to five, okay.
Yes, yes.
Can I just ask if that's Monday through Friday?
Uh, Monday through Saturday.
Monday through, okay.
These are my questions.
So, J- I have one question, um, just to clarify, so you basically must have the cars delivered and then
Yeah, sure.
picked up at some point, do you have, sort of, that just happens anytime during your hours of operation, pretty much?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
That was, just a clarification question, of the ten spots that I see on the map that was provided in the materials,
Exactly.
are those spots pre-existing, you're not going to be touching those spots, or they already exist, there's no construction going to be happening, could you just explain a little bit about what that looks like?
Absolutely, um, yep, so the spots are all pre-existing, um, there's a paved lot out front, um, or, excuse me, to the side there that, where the six cars will be stored outdoors, again, that's already in place, and then in one of the buildings, um there is, again, a building that has already been structured for the last twenty years or so, and will be no work done to that, um, which is suitable to comfortably store a number of four cars as well.
Nice, one more question, um, do you store any vehicular components outside of the buildings?
You mean, you mean car parts, something like that?
Yes.
Is that what you're asking?
Yes, yes.
No, no, I do not.
Jim, did you have?
Um, two questions right now, um, one for the town administrator, what exactly are we looking for in this review? Are we looking at, you know, have they operated a Class Two business before, and did they run afoul of the law, are we, is it a public nuisance kinda standard or something else?
So, it's both, um, you are looking that they've complied with the application, they meet all the criteria in order to hold a Class Two auto license, which I can tell you that through our um check, we had, no issues have arisen. Um, and you are looking to act on any comments or concerns that a butters may have regarding um what takes place at this property, so as long as it's not a nuisance to the neighborhood, you would make those decisions as well as part of the permit uh, the license that you issue, you could put parameters on them regarding hours of operation, delivery of vehicles, things like that, if it were to be a nuisance to the neighborhood.
Second question is for Jared, Jared, I'm, this is sort of following up on questions that Ms. Birch, Michael and Ms. Fretsch asked you. I may be a hard time understanding exactly what you'll be doing from eight to five if the bulk of the business is online.
So, I have my office here, which is where I work, um, and as I'm, you know, searching for cars to, in this interim flip is what I do, um, you know, I'm here, and when I receive a car, I create an inventory that again would be no larger than ten cars at a time. Um, but I would wash the cars, photograph them, and then put them up on my website, and then if I have any, um any, you know, potential customers calling me, they're gonna ask for questions, they may want a specific picture of something that I don't have online. So, with me being, you know, strictly at the property, I'm then able to walk out and either take a video or a picture and, and get back to any customer in a timely manner, because I am here, you know, with my inventory.
Thank you.
How many, how many cars do you estimate selling a year?
So, as of right now, it's only been ten, ten a year, and I try to strictly deal with, with, um, you know, cars that are in nice shape, um, so they tend to be on the expensive side, some others not, not as much but um, more, more of a lower volume, um, is what I'm dealing with, because there's such a, a niche market for it, um, if that answers your question.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Yep.
Can I ask some questions? Yeah.
Um, so I have a question, you mentioned you flipped these vehicles, so do you purchase vehicles that need to be restored, and if so, where is that being done?
Um, so I, I do not do as much restoration, it's, it's more or less just knowing the values of cars, and I explain it to people um, to can, kinda compare it to real estate, so I kind of know what, what buyers want out there, and because I'm able to take a car, um, you know from, you could say, New England, I then therefore advertise it to the whole country, and because I have been doing this for a few years now, I, I really know what are, what cars are desirable and what cars are not. Um, so with that being said, no, there's not that much restoration work to be done, at the same time, that becomes very expensive. If I was in the restoration business, I wouldn't be making that much money, so I, I try to stay away from projects like that. Um, and again, just, just deal with things that I know in, in terms of um classic cars that are in nice condition, that, that have a, a rare value to them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other board questions? Um, are there butters um on the call that would like to ask a question or make a comment about the application?
Uh, yeah, yeah, this is, uh, Tristan Dwyer, um, I, I live next door to two forty Hudson Road. Uh, so I, I think this may have already been answered, um, but are there any plans to build any, like, new buildings, or create any sort of, like, storefronts, or is it kind of still remaining the, you know, keeping existing properties?
Yep, so to answer your question, it's, it's keeping the property as, uh, as it was beforehand, and there are no plans in the future to, to build anything different than what is here now. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer, anybody else?
Uh, yes, I have a question, my name is Gail Shamsi, I'm a, in a butter on Indian Ridge Road. Uh, what is, what is the maximum number of cars that could be sold under this Class Two license?
Um, so as I answered them before, I, I usually do around ten a year, so that could, you know, differ between ten to twenty. Um, but, but normally I'm gonna.
I don't think that's what she's asking.
So, is the license itself restricted to a certain number of cars?
It's. Uh, do.
I do not know the answer to that question.
Let me, I'm gonna ask Denise, our town administrator.
So, no, normally a Class Two license is not limited to a number of cars to sell throughout the year, it could be limited to the number of cars on the lot at one time.
Right.
So, if he's requesting ten spaces, I would expect the license would be limited to ten spaces at one time.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, another question I have is, um, so, within the last few years, there is, um a road directly or driveway directly from Hudson Road, is that the main you know, way to get into your property for these cars? Or would they be going on the other road which was pre-existing? And, you know, goes to houses that are behind our property?
So, I think to answer your question, it would be the pre-existing paved road.
Okay. I mean, just a comment, at times, there are.
I don't know. Well. You froze up. We'll wait and see if she unfreezes.
It could be a connection here.
Is it just her, is it?
Great, the most important one.
Jared, are, are, can you tell us if you're frozen up, you're not frozen up, oh, there, she's back.
No, she's back, she's not back here.
She's not back.
Has then somewhat disarray in the amount of cars and dogs and other things?
Oh, there we go.
Is there any effort to kind of rein some of that in for need or appearance?
Yes, absolutely, and I just wanted to let you know that since we have acquired the property, um, uh, roughly two years ago, we have been making a, a, a pretty big effort into, to cleaning the place up, um, what we were left with was a, you know, a bunch of trailers and we've pretty much gotten them all off the property and we're still, um, you know, still planning on making it um, more representable, so I can, uh, talk to somebody about getting rid of the RV for you, but yes, that is our plan to, to make the property a lot, a lot nicer, um, as we've been doing that in the past year or so. So, we still have a little ways to go, but that is on our agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I think I need clarif- the, the map didn't copy particularly well, but, so, you're saying that you're not, the road out to Hudson Road is not the access, not the primary access, is that right, Jared?
I'm having trouble understanding the question, there's one driveway that goes to Hudson Road, which is the driveway that I use.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, that is the one, okay, all right, that's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Okay.
And I think that's the question.
Yeah, right, okay, but as long as, cause that's, you can see the road when you drive down Hudson Road.
Yep.
That's the one that you're using, that's what the, the transports that are coming in and out are gonna be using that road.
Right.
Yeah, okay, just being clear, um, Mr. Dodd, I see your hand is up.
Yes, I just, Ernie Dodd, Sudbury Road, I'm not a butter, but, uh, has the fire department reviewed your operation for safety? And do you have spill kits for both indoors and outdoors in case, uh, you have fuel or oil spills?
Yes, the fire department and Denise have been to the property, um, already.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Dodd. Anyone else have questions or comments? You don't have to be in a butter. Any other comments from the board? Nope, I think it sounds.
Just, just wondering.
Yes.
I assume as part of this kind of license, some sort of background checks are done on the two proprietors, and uh, since nothing's been raised, I, I mean, I assume there's nothing we need to do about?
That is correct.
Thank you.
So.
Yeah, I'm.
Oh.
Uh, so, I, I, one, one quick question, um, uh, yeah, so I'm, I'm in a butter, uh, and I dwell as kind of like, uh, towards the whole property.
Sure.
Um, so you, you mentioned that you're, you're not really doing much of a, uh, restoration, it's more just, you know, purchasing those. Uh, I mean, do you, do you expect to be doing a lot of, like, maintenance on these vehicles, or, I'm just kinda, you know, concerned with, like, environmental, uh, issues brought up?
Yeah. Yep, um, nope, I, I am not, it's strictly like ninety-five percent of my vehicles that I buy and sell are, are all currently running and they're already inspected and they pretty much just go to a new home, so. Um, yeah, to answer it very briefly, um, again, I, I'm not I have no plan to, to start a restoration business or to be taking cars apart or doing any, any sort of that, um, type of work.
Cool, thank you.
Yep.
So, if, um, if there's no more questions, we'll close, oh, actually, I get a, I have a motion to close the hearing.
Madam Chair, I move to close the hearing.
Second. Uh, so now, uh, we need to proceed with, um, any stipulations we want to add to the Class Two license.
I just, you didn't take a vote on closing the hearing.
Oh, gotta take a vote on closing the hearing. And this is a roll call.
Aye.
Thank you, correct. Selby?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you. Unanimously close the hearing, okay, so now, um, stipulations for the license, um, yes?
Um, so I think the hours of operation. Um, I think the ten cars.
Which were? The ten cars. Um, and should we say that continues to meet the, the, um, special permit previously issued in nineteen eighty-nine?
Sure.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, cause any kind of change to the buildings or anything would have to come back through CBA or whatever, so.
Right. Other? Yes, Jim?
We have two variations on the same conditions, um. I wanted to get a little more specific on the hours of operation, I wanna mention specific things that they, so I, I would say.
Oh, sure, like.
Hours of operation from eight to five.
Delivering.
Specifically, no transportation of cars, work on cars, including cleaning or customer visits, except during the hours of eight to five, Monday through Friday, except holidays.
Yep.
My only other thing, this is kind of a.
He said Saturday, he did say Saturday.
He said Saturday.
Monday through Saturday.
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 Monday through Saturday.
Yep.
Uh, and my only other thing is, what, I don't know, it seems to me that what we really care about, and I can live with it either way, we care about the six cars outside, if he wants to keep a car in his bedroom, it's not our business, it's not. it's not our business, it's not the buyer's business, so I was thinking about just limiting it to that.
Yeah.
Right.
Does that maybe there was a?
Yes, because that, you're right, if he fits however many cars in the building, who cares? Well, if it's for sale, though, the license is allowing him to sell vehicles, so you could say six vehicles outside, but ten vehicles. So if someone were to go to his property and he has ten vehicles, but he's only permitted for six under the class two license, then he can't sell the four inside.
Got it, oh, I see what you're saying, yeah, yeah, so ten to- for sale, six outside, yeah.
So you, we could specify ten vehicles. Um but we should, we should include the license to cover the ten vehicles that he is requesting to sell at one time.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep.
That makes sense.
Madam Chair, do you want a motion?
Um I have, there's one more, I I like from the application, which was that the property will not be used to advertise cars.
Yeah, go ahead, Salvi.
Sorry.
Right.
Okay, anything?
Do we want to ask the applicant if he has?
Yeah, applicant, uh does this, is any questions on this from you, does that all make sense?
Yeah.
Come on.
It all makes sense, thank you.
All right, yes, sorry.
Madam Chair, may I just confirm, um our our building commissioner did have a quote with regards to condition number four that I thought was also important. Uh regarding, all vehicles shall be parked only on paved areas, no vehicular components shall be stored outside of the buildings except on a short-term temporary basis, and then only on paved areas, is that included in your condition number four, all that would be included?
Right. That's. Yes, on the the special permit, that's, that is included.
Thank you.
Um Jared, I would just confirm that have you seen this special permit from nineteen eighty-nine?
Oh, you're muted.
Um yes, I uh.
Okay. I mean, I know that's, it's not much of what you do currently, but um but we will, yeah, okay, great.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, so that all being said, Jim, I am ready for a motion.
Well, before I do that, let me read the conditions as I understand them.
Okay. Okay.
Um.
Actually, excuse me, I have just one one last question, sorry, I I'd be too late, um but uh since you're you're talking about the conditions, um so I I've been here about six years, um and you know, when I first moved in, it it seemed that there was just that main garden that we were um were discussing earlier, um and then at some point, after a few years, it seemed like they cleared a bunch of trees out of the plant. Um and so now the the main property is more visible from Hudson Road, it's it's, you still kind of don't notice it driving by, but if if further trees were to be cleared, that that property starts to kind of stick out more as you're driving by, and it's primarily a residential area, so I don't know if there are any, it it sounds like there are no plans to do anything like that. Um but kind of like clearing the land in front of that property would potentially make it a little bit more nicer um for the road.
That's part of the license. I don't think that's part of the license.
So uh may I?
Our charge.
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Yeah.
Number one, I do think that comment was too late, when you close a public hearing, you close a public hearing, but on the substance of it,
Yes, yeah, yes.
That's right.
Yes.
Right.
Um people can cut down trees in general, there are local restrictions on that, street trees, wetlands, blah blah blah. I don't see any particular reason to impose particular restrictions on this, and I think it's a little bit outside of what we're talking about right now, which is the operation of the class two used vehicle license.
Yep.
Yeah, I agree. Okay. And also, the special permit actually had talked about privacy fencing, I don't know what's currently there, but um
So.
So I would, I would just ask Jared to keep that in mind, um especially around his butters.
Okay, you'll do.
Mr. Salvi, if you could continue.
The conditions, as I understand them from the board, are continued compliance with the special permit of nineteen eighty-nine, no more than ten vehicles on the premises at any one time, including no more than six cars outside at any one time. Um hours of operation of eight to five, Monday through Saturday, uh in, which includes no transportation of vehicles, no work on cars, including cleaning, and no customer visits other than during those hours of operation, and God, I can't read my own handwriting, property.
No advertising.
Um not to be used for the advertising of cars.
I just have a quick comment, Mr. Spence may have vehicle that he wants to be able to use, and you you said only ten vehicles on the property, I think ten for sale, uh just to be clear.
Hmm.
Yes.
In case he's not driving one of these swanky.
He has to park on Hudson Road.
With that, are you ready for a motion?
Yes. Ready for the motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the select board approved class two license for Dover Speed Shop at three seventy Hudson Road in Stowe, subject to the following conditions, continued compliance with the special permit issued in nineteen eighty-nine, no more than ten vehicles on the prem- ten vehicles for sale on the premises at any one time, including six cars stored outside at any one time. Uh hours of operation of of eight to five, eight AM to five PM, Monday through Saturday, which which entails no transportation of cars, no work on cars, including cleaning, and no customer visits other than during those hours of operation, and no use of the premises for the advertising of cars. This license is valid through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one, and subject to renewal thereafter.
Second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Bye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you for uh joining us tonight and congratulations, and Denise will be in touch with you about the paperwork.
Thank you guys.
Yes, so I'll write up the license, have the board sign it, and then we'll get it to you, Jared.
All right, great, that was my my question, so thank you guys very much.
All right, good luck.
You're welcome, good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, um next up is the annual town meeting debrief, I know our moderator is here, David Walrath. Um I will just say to others who might have some thoughts, um once we have a just hear from David and the board, if the public has some comments, feel free to uh to raise your hand and I will call on you. But David, why don't you kick us off?
Uh thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great.
If you wanna mute yourself Dover Speed.
I'm gonna mute them for them, they don't say anything, we don't want to hear.
They don't, until they realize that they're still on, okay, go ahead, David.
So, I had a meeting last week, uh that was actually a public meeting, but I didn't advertise it a lot. And about eight um folks showed up, uh chairs of various committees, uh deputy and assistant moderators. And I thought I'd summarize um five things that uh that came up, I'm not gonna talk a lot about presentations and stuff, because that's we can, but uh that's not something the selectmen really usually wanna get into. Uh first, I thought it went very well, uh like the previous year, um I'll make a uh uh comment, uh several people commented to me that they uh uh thought that the new town administrator was clear and concise and spoke at a an appropriate uh uh level for the 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 audience. Um next, uh everyone loved the clickers, uh I don't know if it's clear, we do own the clickers. Uh there were a couple of technical issues that need to be worked out, but uh I think if we're go to all indoors, those will go away. Uh but the reason I bring up clickers is uh there were a number of comments that the select board and maybe the finance committee, possibly other boards, uh should raise their hands or otherwise make their votes on some of the uh 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 motions or warrant articles more public. I'm not sure as moderator I would mandate that, but it's something that I will toss out to the floors that you can discuss. Um a minor issue, but it comes up uh fairly frequently in uh uh the comments that we get is people would like childcare, uh that's probably worth an entire discussion by itself. The reason the town hasn't done it is a combination of we don't have the the capacity, the people that that do that, and liability, um but there are ways that that could be done. Uh the two bigger issues that that uh uh came up were Saturday versus Monday, we we switched to Saturday because of COVID the last couple of years, some people like it, some people not so much. My own comment, I think might summarize it that I made at the last week's meeting. I really, really like getting town meeting done in one day, and know that we're gonna get it one done in one day, and I really, really hate giving up a Saturday for town meeting. And I I I think the last time before COVID, we've had one Saturday town meeting back in the late nineties, and this uh maybe somebody, someone has better institutional memory, but my memory was the selectmen asked folks, and it was about fifty percent. Well, I shouldn't say fifty percent, about the same number of people loved it as hated it. And it wasn't any different than the people that loved versus hate Monday night, and then there's the the large group in the middle, it it'll work either way. And then finally, Center versus Hale, a couple of people said that they really liked Center. I thought I'd address that a little bit. Um it is a more friendly venue, the stage is much bigger, and it's it's wider. The disadvantages, um most people didn't notice unless you were uh uh working with the setup, is technically Center is is kind of tough. There's some technical issues with the sound and and other things that can be worked around. But the bigger issue is Center School uses that space until the buses get out, which means we couldn't use it, really use it for a Monday night, because it took, I don't know, six hours of heavy setup to to get um uh Center School ready for the Saturday morning town meeting, and that was, I think there were some people there till nine or ten o'clock Friday night, um getting the space ready, it's kind of a fire drill, just getting it ready for Saturday morning, uh that's one issue. And if there was any technical problems that we couldn't fix Friday night, we we it'd be tough. Uh Hale, the benefit is, usually they'll let us set up um well before town meeting, and they just don't use the auditorium for the Monday or or even the Friday and Monday, so that uh it can be set up. Um space, I'm kind of surprised, in theory, Center School can fit almost as many people as Hale, it actually has a capacity of a thousand. I think the problem with that is is, um if we did have another seven hundred and fifty plus person town meeting, finding enough chairs, we'd have to do something, the school doesn't really have enough chairs without bringing a a truckload from Nishova. Uh Hale, we fit about four hundred and thirty people in the auditorium, which fits most town meetings, a hundred people in the cafeteria, and the gym can fit up to about six hundred people, which is a little over a thousand. And oh, and the only other minor issue is, if we were to do another Center School town meeting, the clerk would appreciate having only one check-in area. Um there were some minor, well, I shouldn't say minor, there were some technical issues this year with two check-in areas that caused some some behind-the-scenes issues. Um and I'd also, uh personally, I guess on behalf of Stowe TV and other people at setup, um if you do consider a different date or a different venue, uh or moving dates or venues, I should say day, Saturday versus Monday, that we could maybe pick one and keep with it, because for every different, for every change, we have to keep sort of institutional memory and protocols and knowing, really knowing how to set up for an evening versus a daytime, a Center versus a Hale, and those are all my comments, thank you.
Thanks, David. Linda, are you still, what, I I think, uh why don't we give you a chance to, as the second critical piece of this, uh you and David together, and and of course, your team. Thoughts from you that you wanna share that David might not have mentioned? You're muted. And you're muted.
We, it would basically hit on many of the same points, um about um the concerns about the setup, that's the biggest, one of the biggest issues in being able to handle the volume. Also, that um I would prefer one single check-in place.
Yeah.
Um but I agree, the clickers are great, we have five hundred, the one issue that we had with the clickers this year is they, the outside ones were assigned for outside, and the ones, I mean, for inside were assigned to a receiver inside, and they didn't interchange. So we will want more people to help um get those things worked out and set up, but um basically I thought things went well at Center, but I do prefer Hale at uh for a setup, and ease and being able to know where things are and what we're doing.
Um so my first question, so as someone who saw how much work it was to set it up, and therefore to break it down, I totally get that. But if it wasn't, if it wasn't indoor/outdoor, how much, you know, it it seemed like that was a huge addition of work, because you had to do setup for outside as well as inside, and including not just the technical stuff, but but your check-ins and and the procedures. Do you think that's a significant addition to the amount, when David said it took six hours at least uh for setup?
It, we were, if we were there quite late, um finalizing, Debbie, Debbie and I particularly, um finalizing everything, but it's it's the setup piece.
Yeah.
Um if we had to set up all those chairs, if that, if we were expecting for the, you know, when we go in to vote for Nishova High School project, it's going to be a large turnout, and um you know, it'll be difficult to get everything set up in a timely manner, because we would only be able to get in either Friday afternoon after three or Monday after three.
Right. Right.
So.
So, um Denise, do you wanna, did you have some thoughts on this, or should we open to the board?
No, I mean, I think it was um, it was a lot of setup, it was a lot of work that needed to be done. I think it definitely is, definitely was very complicated to go there at three o'clock on Friday and have everything done. The, while the school was great and worked with us as best we could, obviously, it's their cafeteria, it's their gym, it's their bus route, that's where they line up. Um so we really didn't have any options. I think in a pinch, and for the indoor/outdoor, I think it works well. Um I don't know the Hale space, but from everything I've heard, it seems to be more conducive to a normal town meeting. The Monday versus the Saturday, I will say, um while I don't like giving up a Saturday, I like getting it done in one sitting. I think it's nice that you can come in and just finish and get everything done versus coming back multiple nights. Um I know that, you know, when you're multiple nights, it's tougher for people to get babysitters, it's tougher to work around work schedules and meeting schedules, so um I like the one and done, but um you know, whatever is in the best interest, we are having some technical difficulties here. Whatever's in the best interest of obviously the town and the, but I agree, I think we should pick a format now that COVID's over, whether or not that's today.
Mm-hmm.
Uh but we should sort of decide if we will resume Monday nights, um there has been some talk about a fall town meeting potentially. Um you know, what will that look like for us, and what day, and how will that work?
Mm-hmm.
So.
Um I will say, just to add, I, there was a a lot of Facebook comments, um I had just sort of posted one of those sort of nonchalant, oh, it was a five-and-a-half-hour town meeting, what'd you think? And and we got actually over a hundred posts on it, so I actually did ta- take those down and copy them and gave them to David and Linda and um and that group last week, so they could see the comments. And I would say, just as David said, in the past, it was sort of fifty-fifty, I think, on the Monday versus, or you know, night versus day. You know, and and I think we also, the group that was in that call pretty much said, well, we get the same two hundred people pretty much no matter what, you know, and and the question is, um if we if we cha- if we say we change from our norm of Mondays to to a Saturday, can we get this the sports groups to just take a day off, you know, so that parents don't feel like they're torn between watching their kids at soccer or baseball and and coming to town meeting? But the reality is, you know, our norm is two hundred, two fifty, and then it's those special meetings, like we'll have, I'm sure with the high school um project, that will bring out more people, but.
So I open it to the board for comments or questions to the group before we open the public. Any thoughts?
Was there anything said at the meeting that talked about how we could incentivize more people to attend? You know, so I heard the babysitting, but anything else that, you know, we can be considering, uh just because I think our mission should be as many people as possible, and so balancing that obviously with some logistical concerns and everything else, you know, I wanna be thinking about how we're going to incentivize people to come. Uh and making sure, you know, childcare is huge, I think also going over lunch, I know a lot of folks sort of at that point were like, I I I need to go eat, uh especially uh folks with with certain medical conditions who obviously needed to to go do that or excuse it, so I actually liked the fact that people could eat uh in at the tables, and I thought that was good, I saw people doing that. Uh but I want, I wanna make sure that's how we're thinking about this debrief as well, is what did we learn, and how do we think we can continue to try to make this more accessible? more accessible, um, and, you know, that sort of, right?
Anybody?
Certainly, I think that the uh, the one and done has some appeal, but I would agree with Zach, I think it would be useful to give the moderator a break, to give other people that are essentially working that day, um, some kind of breaks, so maybe you know, a brief mid-morning or lunch or something, so.
I I do think if we move forward, right, then and setting those kinds of parameters, that could really work. Cause I think in the past, the two nights, it was like if we're not done by this time, then we're moving it to the next night. Saturday kind of felt like, wow, we're, like, there's no endpoint here, it's just gonna keep going and going and going.
It's a little bit dark.
So I think that's a fantastic idea to have a break, you know, and and or multiple breaks, depending on, you know, if the meeting's gone three hours, we have a set twenty minute break. Then if it goes another three hours, then there's like a set twenty minute break or whatever the timing is um for it. Cause I I do feel like also knowing that that break is going to happen allows for people to either come in later or they know that
Right.
um, they're gonna be able to get, go to the bathroom then or or eat or do something, you know? And I and I think that that's a, that would be a good thing moving forward. Cause it it just, it was long, it was, Courtney knows, I sat next door.
So someone had suggested, and I guess some towns, uh, you know, actually make, if when it is a Saturday that they, you break, you have a lunch thing. It's, you know, either if it's organized, either you bring food trucks in or you organize some potlucks or whatever, you know, so that you sort of do a a festive break. I mean, again, if you've decided to commit Saturday, then it's not gonna make that much of a difference, you still need to eat anyway, so, you know, forty-five minute break to do that. But um, David, did you have your hand up, you have another thought?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, both you and Zach had had mentioned that. We had discussed both last year and this year, having the Lions Club bring a food truck and because of COVID, we didn't. If we did have another Saturday town meeting, that definitely would be high on the list of of things to add. So thanks for bringing it up. Um, I I apologize, I didn't even consider a break, cause I thought we'd be done by about one o'clock.
And you more than anybody, you just kept on going, so good for you, David, it was impressive.
Oh, I cheated, I, there were a couple of those ten minute presentations that I already made as a presentation, so I had a drink and a quick white tea.
Gotcha.
I did, um, I just wanna, I think this is a little bit repetitive. I had a slight preference for the Saturday, as I think I'm sort of hearing here. I actually thought I detected um a slightly better and less grumpy demeanor to the group than I have seen at some evening. People get tired at around ten o'clock at night. Um, thinking of one verbal altercation on the floor of town meeting maybe six years ago, it it would not have happened at this town meeting. Um, I like the idea of a break, you would, it should be a break though that people can vote not to have, because if you're on Article fifty-three out of sixty, they might just wanna plow ahead.
Right.
Um, but the main point I wanted to make, so we topped out around two hundred and three voters out of a total electorate of about fifty-two hundred, that's less than four percent. So the problem isn't just that parents aren't showing up, the problem is that nobody's showing up. So I think, you know, childcare, things like that, uh, trying to move sports, that's part of it, but not everything. We should be thinking about transportation, and now I'm gonna rattle off stuff as though this is free and everybody has plenty of spare time. Transportation and some sort of, if we can keep the outdoor component, I went outside and I noticed people are walking around, talking, kids are out there. If we could have something to do out there during the articles that people don't, they're just listening to the debate on the speakers, they want something else to do, a swap shop, maybe, you know? There are dumps in town that get more people on a Saturday than our town meeting. Um, and a swap shop might be just go and look at other people's junk and maybe it's your treasure, um, just something to do like that.
I think another thing that I have been thinking a lot about and I thought about when I moved here too from Rhode Island is town meeting is something that is very, it's it's a Massachusetts thing. And you have people who are moving here who don't understand what town meeting is and what the function of it is. And so I do think that there's some education that could go, that we could do, um, because I think that people really, I have heard people get really riled up about things in town and they're like, ah, you know, whatever. And it's like, you go to town meeting, that's what town meeting's for, but if you don't know what town meeting is, then you're not gonna know that that's the place that you go to vote, whatever. You're gonna think that a November election is the time that you do all these things and not understand. So I do thi- and I don't know, I don't have a solution as to how to do this, but I do think it's something that's worth exploring, just educating voting age people in the town. Um, that this is a, this this is, you can go to November and go to the ballot box, but this is equally as important to having the town function.
Right.
Yes.
Denise?
No, I was, so I'll comment, I agree with that, but um, I feel like this year, cause I've looked back, um, we put out information much more than we have, it's on Facebook, it's on Twitter, it's on our website, it's been in the newspaper.
Right.
There is some responsibility for people to educate themselves and go to town meeting.
Yes.
Um, and quite frankly, I haven't learned in all of my years how to do that, how to get people to take the interest and participate. So I think we can continue to spread the word, we can add all these other incentives in. I honestly don't think it's gonna increase that dramatically.
I agree.
Um, a- across the board, I mean, I've I've shared with you all, I I live in Billerica, there have been some hot topics, granted we're a representative town meeting, but even unelected, highly contested races, six percent turnout.
Yeah.
It just, you know, uh, last year there was the thought that the Neshoba feasibility study was gonna get all these people. There weren't, and yes, it was COVID, but I think we can be creative, but I really do think at the end of the day, two fifty is still the number we're gonna get.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Courtney?
Well, I was, I was uh sort of cooking up this zany idea of something between, some across between Spring Fest and but I think you're, I think Denise is right. It's pretty dry fair and some people are just like, yeah, you know, go ahead, vote, you know, the budget is gonna be the budget anyway, we're gonna, whatever, you know? I love it because I love, I love being, I love that people get up and say what they think. And and we are, we are um held in this space by our moderator for for respectful debate. And it's just this opportunity to, you know, to be together as a community in this perhaps slightly contentious way, but it's, we're talking about stuff that's our town. So, so that's what I would wanna educate people about, is this opportunity to go see the zaniness of sausage, like why? But it, um, so I don't know, I mean, I think a picnic, you know, some something that
Yeah.
um, for the people that like those might, huh?
Yeah. Yeah. Right.
Should we mention one thing that's related?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I was thinking about this, the FinCom hearing this year was different in a subtle way from prior years, and I think it's largely because of Denise. There was, each article started off with basically a layman's explanation of what this does. Sometimes prompted by a question, sometimes not prompted by a question, but your default seemed to be, well, just say what it is in English. In the past, it had been more just like, okay, Article fifty-three, any questions? Okay, seeing none, Article fifty-four. So that, I could be used to educate, when I first moved to town, one of the big barriers to me going to town meeting, even though my wife was going, was I don't know what's on this warrant, I don't understand this stuff. What am I gonna do, just watch what those people up in the front of the room do and copy them? I'm not even gonna understand the debate. The FinCom public hearing, if it could be somehow expanded, that format could be an opportunity to give people a layman's understanding of what is on this warrant.
Yeah.
Well, I thought, I mean, just and to give you credit again, for the the warrant had so much more information in it and, you know, and the, you know, as as I think Steve Jelinek said as Chair of Capital Planning, he wants to put his presentation in next year's warrant because he felt like, hey, I mean, now, still, not everybody read it, but it was there and in very good, clear English. I mean, I say again that when you presented the budget to us, that that meeting, whatever that was, months ago, it was the best presentation I'd ever heard of of Stowe's finances, you know, and I love our former finance chairs, some of them are in the room, you know? But, you know, you really just nailed it down to a very concise thing and I think that made a huge difference. Um, and also you were at the finance hearing, so, you know, that was big, cause then there was someone to answer the questions that we sometimes have and didn't know who to ask, so. Yes, Linda, go ahead.
Um, so I think part of the issue is getting some of the information out earlier and putting it in a place where it's concise, where we can see where the FinCom public, you know, let them know, let people know further ahead of time when that public hearing's gonna be held. And then publicize it'll even more than what we do. It's definitely in the Stowe Independent, but maybe there's more information or there's an article or there's more PR of at the education process and where to find things. And that we, we do have a dedicated town election, town meeting page, but we could probably fine tune it a little bit more. And the the video for, there'd be a link of the public hearing or when a meeting's being discussed or whatever is going on, so that people can go back there and become more educated on the on the topic. I do agree that it's an education component, it's hard, it's like, we can put all the information out there, but I don't know what they're gonna read. I don't know, we put it everywhere, so you would think people would know where to find it or become engaged in it. I know one town tried to sell, um, you know, they would do raffle tickets, show what you get at raffle price. Um, you know, you could get dog tags number one if you came to town meeting and I wish you were a raffle.
They don't get that.
I'm in, I'm in.
You know, it's like, people have tried different things and what I've seen over all these years and what I hear my colleagues saying, it's the topic of the warrant, whether it's a lar- it's gonna be a large dollar item and larger than the five hundred thousand dollar feasibility study, it would be the Center School project type of thing. A huge land purchase for a fi- a new public safety building. Those are the things that get the, starting earlier, cause we're already talking about twenty twenty-two, so.
Right, right, yeah.
Right.
Maybe, maybe.
For our general election.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Right. Well, and I think, you know, to Megan's point around people who don't understand sort of even what the point of town meeting is. Um, you know, Ed Newman did a great video, however many years ago, and I didn't find it until like two days before town meeting and I, cause because I think especially for this one page that has a lot of relatively new parents on it, you know? If you came from somewhere else, you know, other, I mean, northern New England, it's not just Massachusetts, but, you know, Maine, New Hampshire, you know, we're all Vermont, big on town meeting. But if you're not from here, you don't know, you have no idea. You don't know how much fun it is, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that video is available on YouTube and where I believe about, there's a DVD somewhere, I think we could find that and get it online if people could see.
I would, I think, I
It's irrelevant.
Well, ask Jonathan, cause I I would think Stowe TV has a copy, I used to have a copy, I just have to find it.
Well, if it's on YouTube, I can link the YouTube link to the town meeting page.
It's funny, cause mass moderators are charging for it.
Yeah, it's on that YouTube one, it was questionable.
Oh, oh, there you go.
Maybe not age appropriate.
Okay. I'll I'll spend the ten bucks to buy another copy from mass moderators, but, um, so. Um, so I don't know that we're ready to make a recommendation on Saturday versus Monday, but I I think that we should plan sometime in the next month that we're gonna nail this down. I I would invite the pub- oh, actually, I didn't ask, are there people on the call who'd like to, um, who were either at town meeting or not and would like to admit that? And tell us what you think of this conversation? Cause I I was just gonna say, I think, you know, hearing from from residents, both those who could attend and those who could not or did not, um, if you have a preference, Saturdays versus Monday, I, you know, I'm hearing that Hale really has to be the place to do it, that it's too much work, too much additional work, as much as I love that school, um, that Hale is set up much better for technology, for, you know, the chairs and for the ability to get whether whether it was Saturday or Monday, um, we could still do outdoor activities. So. I don't see any other hands, so, um, so we will put this on our work plan to to come back to for a recommendation, um, sometime in July. Um, which, um, we, I mean, I guess we already are getting a sense, it'll be a special town meeting in the fall, so we need to decide well in advance of that. Any last thoughts from the board? Okay. Moving on, thank you again, Linda, for all your work and for Deb and for your whole team and David for just even if you snuck out, I didn't know, so, uh, thank you for for sticking to a five and a half hour town meeting.
Yeah.
Well done. So, um, I just, I have a quick introduction to the next item, which I wanna say, um, before we start a discussion about the adoption of the Juneteenth holiday, I'd like to say there are many ways to acknowledge and a- address historic, cultural and social practices that have been ignored and more often directed, directly and negatively impacted many members of our community and of our larger society. From what I know of Stowe's norms, the Select Board has not had any policy regarding recognizing these wrongs in any formal way, and I will be asking the board as part of our upcoming planning session to put this on our discussion on our work plan. I would also ask the board to focus on institutional changes rather than or perhaps in addition to one-off statements. In this case, we're responding to an act of the legislature, making Juneteenth a state holiday while allowing municipalities to decide if they want to adopt it as well. I'd like to read the memo sent by our town administrator to town employees in case others haven't read it, um, that are in the public, cause I think it states extremely well why adoption of this holiday is the right thing to do. So. So this is written by Denise Nowoski. In an effort to reorg- and to recognize the continued need to ensure racial freedom and equality and to further stand with Black Lives Matter movement, beginning this year, we will be observing the Juneteenth holiday that becomes a Massachusetts state holiday effective this year, twenty twenty-one. Since it is not yet a federal holiday, it is optional for cities and towns and many are choosing not to include it unless the employees bargain it in. To me, Denise, this is not a bargaining chip. I believe that we should be honoring and commemorating this holiday, which celebrates the end of slavery on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five. In an article I read, it stated that Juneteenth should be a time of reflection on how far we have come while using it as an opportunity to reignite our passion for fighting for liberty and justice for all. This continues to remain true as we fight against ongoing discrimination and hate toward Black and AIPI people, the LGBTQ community and so many others. Recognizing this holiday in Stowe is a step towards being a more inclusive and supportive community and one that is open to and inviting of diversity in our workforce. Thank you again, Denise, for summarizing this extremely well. Um, and with that, I will open, um, so so the proposal is to accept Juneteenth as a Stowe holiday as well as a state holiday, um, which this year would be on on Friday, June eighteenth, um, because the June nineteenth is a Saturday this year. And I will open up for comment and discussion, first with the board and then the public.
I think it's a good idea.
Second what you said.
Has Denise essentially already done this? That was kind of my understanding.
Yes, essentially.
Okay.
So we are, we are, um, accepting it as the board, I guess, to make it an ongoing. I guess if anything, we would be opposing it for the future, she's given it as a holiday for this for this year. But I think it's important, I mean, given that it's it's the town that has that option to decide that we should.
I think it it's an excuse for me to make a point that I, um, I believe, I believe in education as the thing that will ultimately accomplish some of the social justice goals. And I think Juneteenth, well, obviously, this is a great idea, um, you know, not using it as a bargaining chip. But I think Juneteenth is an example of one of those things that the public schools have not teach us about. At least mine didn't. You know, I could mention others, um, Tuskegee Airmen, I mean, I figured it out from from context, but I never had an actual formal lesson in it. Uh, Stonewall, I'm appalled to say I grew up maybe twenty-five, thirty miles away from it, I was alive at the time, I don't remember it. No one's ever talked me about it, again, I figured it out from context. And I would love if we could figure out how to do something along those lines, to teach the lessons that the schools didn't teach us. Juneteenth is a great example, you know, I I shared with Denise, I had a black acquaintance who taught me about it, but she got it wrong. She had the wrong day and she had the wrong, she thought it had something to do with the Forty Acres and a Mule thing in in South Carolina. She wasn't aware of exactly what it was, it's, there's this gap in in public education on things like this. So I I think it's a great idea, I think possibly it opens up other opportunities.
Yeah, I agree, I think that by putting it out there, that it, you know, it is a way to educate. Yeah, I agree. I think that by putting it out there, that it, you know, it is a way to educate. Having said that, there are other holidays that are out there that we could discuss later, um, uh, that are out there that, that other towns such as Maynard, um, are talking about, um, changing Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. Um, and so I do think that, you know, again, it's about education and it's about sort of, um, um, I have nothing else to say on that, sorry. That was the end of the sentence.
I think this is about doing the right thing, and I think you did the right thing. And for that, I am very, very, um, excited that you're our town administrator. Uh, this is exactly the leadership we need. It's what will encourage people of all backgrounds, great people of all backgrounds, to apply, to work for Stowe, to know that we want them here. It's not a bargaining chip. It's a, a day for education and a day for understanding. I think this doesn't frankly go far enough, as I've stated earlier. I think this is a beautiful start. Um, but there are a lot more months and days that we have to start to recognize as a board. If we want to recruit the best people in our town, regardless of background, it's a competitive market, we have to move forward in doing this. And Denise, I just want to say thank you for, for doing the right thing. Um, and I, I heard from many people, they were, you know, brought to tears when sharing some of your words because it matters to people. Words matter to people. So I want to say thank you and I'm very excited, uh, that we're going to do this as a town. Very excited and I believe it's a paid holiday, it's an additional holiday, it's the right thing to do. Um, and so I'm, again, just thrilled that we're doing this.
And I think to Jim's point, I, I mean, it's sort of short notice. I had hoped to come up with some way to sort of have some event or educational something, um, but it's short notice. So I hope that going forward, we can come up with, um, you know, working with the library, maybe, um, there are so many things we didn't learn as kids, I mean, you know, about things that happened in the world, right, right around us and we didn't know, so. Um, but I think this one in particular is such an opportunity for us to move forward on educating ourselves in, in this context.
Yes, so I have been speaking with Tina, our library director, and, uh, we are going to start working on some collaborative education. Um, that they will pick a book that is depicting of an event and a holiday, Juneteenth, and then, um, we will help spread the word on the town side, get it on our website, mention it in meetings. Um, so they are going to work on that when, when we start the reopening process, so that going forward, we can do more education collaboratively.
That's wonderful.
Um, are there any, anybody on the call in the Zoom world that would like to comment on this? Yeah, Kelly?
Hi, hi, um, I, I really like the chat box, but I know that that's not the most professional way, um, to, to say anything. So thank you for opening up it up again to some public comment. Uh, I really liked, um, what, what, it's John, right?
Jim, Jim, Jim.
Jim.
Jim, sorry. What Jim had to say about education and as a teacher, I think that is, um, extremely important. It's, it's pivotal, it's what we're captive start and obviously it's pretty clear up to most of us in the room, to hopefully to most of us on this Zoom call. Um, and kind of in society, um, as well, you know, how much we've realized that we didn't really know. So I think all of these concerted and collaborative efforts, um, are really, I, I just see that as such a positive way to move our town forward. Um, and when Jim was speaking about education, um, you know, something that I recently learned about, um, just as an LGBTQ plus ally, um, is the Stonewall riots. Um, so I just wanted to reiterate and thank you and congratulate you for pushing this forward. Uh, but hopefully we can continue to have these, these talks in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Hector?
Hi, um, I was actually about to lower my hand because Kelly I would have said, but, uh, since I am on, I will say, thank you very much for doing this. This is a great start. And as has already been said, there's a lot more to do and as a member of the, uh, the Shover Area Social Justice Alliance, I'm looking forward to the group working with the town of Stowe to look at all the upcoming dates, months and other celebrations so that we can move forward and start recognizing all the other things that need to be recognized and have been ignored for far too long. So thank you for doing this.
Thank you, Hector. Abby?
Hi, um, I'm just joining in, but thank you for putting this on the agenda and having this discussion. Um, I also wanted to say all the things that Kelly and Hector said, so, um, all I will add is that, um, I think education also is very important and I think that, um, by you making this happen, you are kicking off that education. So the things that you do and, and the policies you've put in place help that education to happen. Um, because then you can be the place to start that. So I really appreciate making this holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Abby. Uh, I think we covered everyone, so, um, I will take, do we have a mo- yeah, a mo- motion?
Uh, we do, sorry. Madam Chair, I move to accept June 19th designated as Juneteenth in commemoration of the end of slavery on June 19th, 1865 as a town holiday observance.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous. Thank you again. Okay, uh, so discussion of meetings after June 15th in terms of format, and I presume this is around the COVID rules changing. So Denise, I will let you take this.
Yes, thank you. So, um, we got some word today that the Senate is expected to take up the extension of the fully remote meetings on Thursday. Um, the House has stated that they plan to act on it as soon as the Senate does. Uh, that being said, there's no guarantees this is going to happen by next Tuesday. Um, I have been working with boards and committees. I think some of you have seen the, um, documentation that I've been putting out regarding meeting formats. Uh, right now, we are planning for as of, um, there is some confusion. It is 12:01 AM on Tuesday morning. So technically, as of midnight Monday night, um, the state of emergency is over. Um, right now, and unless the legislation goes through, meetings resume fully in person as of Tuesday. That being said, um, for this board specifically, you know, I, I have talked to many chairs of boards over the last few days. Um, I have told them that quite frankly, I think whatever they as a board feel comfortable doing going forward, they should do. Um, so what I would say to you is if in fact the legislation does not happen, um, and even if it does, it doesn't mean you have, we have to stay fully remote with the residents. So I think we should have a discussion on what you see happening here after June 15th. Um, are you ready to welcome in-person public back into the meeting? Um, if so, would you require masks on those people? Um, would you still, would, would you still like a Zoom component for people to participate remotely? Um, so I'd say that's what we should figure out. Um, if the legislation passes, I think the most recent version I saw was it would extend fully remote meetings as an option through next April. Originally, we were told it was going to be September, now they're saying it will be April of 2022. Um, which I do think will benefit some boards. I think, you know, some committees, it's just as easy to stay at home and have a meeting as long as everyone can access it and it's readily available. I have heard some concerns from other boards that, um, they're not sure how they can function in a hybrid manner.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, it will be a little more difficult if we have public back in here, keeping on Zoom, the public, the board, et cetera. But, um, I think we can do it because it's worked for us. Uh, but I just wanted to throw it out to you all to see how you felt we as a board here should operate as of next Tuesday and with our first meeting being June 22nd.
I will just say, um, the magic call this morning, this was a topic of conversation and particularly the challenge of, of committees trying to do hybrid because of the technology. Everybody wants to know what technology we have because most towns haven't, didn't purchase it or thought they didn't need it and, and now, you know, and I think you had said at our previous meeting that for other boards, even in town, if they don't use this room, it could be really challenging. So, um, it's not just us that are trying to grapple with this, so, yeah, Megan, go ahead.
Um, I do think from an equity perspective, it has been fantastic to have Zoom. Um, and so, um, however, having said that, our meetings are also recorded and on Stowe TV. And so that, like, there is an access to our meetings, um, if doing it hybrid was too complicated. Um, I do, I would like having the public in here. Um, I think that for certain things like recognition, it's nice to actually have the ceremony of having people physically in a room. Um, however, I can say that because I've never been in a meeting with the public. So I've only been a select board member remotely, so I don't, I, I have a very different perspective. Um, and so I would love to hear from the, the members who have sat with the public in front of them.
Well, for example, we still have 19 people on this call.
Right, I mean, I, I think
We wouldn't get 19 people in the room, from my memory, uh, in, in-person meetings, so.
Right, right.
Not this late
Well, so
into the meeting.
No.
Right, right. But thoughts, other meeting?
I, uh, I agree with Megan. I, I think that it's really great to have the capability for people to, the hybrid, um, capability. So that, um, you know, somebody can sit and knit, not have to mobilize to the town building to listen to, to things, to be, to be involved, to pay attention. Um, as far as people coming in, um, I've yet to be hit with a piece of rotten fruit. Um, I, I, and I don't think that, that anybody else has been hit in the room. Um, I'm, I'm in favor of letting people come in. I'm, I don't have a strong opinion about people wearing masks, you know. Cede that to other people who have a strong opinion, um.
Yeah. And would the board be comfortable back at one table? Because if we have the public, we will need to go back to one area of the meeting room.
So that's something I was going to mention.
Yeah.
This format is terrific and, um, five of us crowded at that table.
Well, plus with Bill at the end though, too, right?
And, well, and with the town administrator at the end now. And if we don't do remote, then Joyce would have to be here, um.
No, she could watch it, she'd be here with it, yeah.
No, she could still do YouTube.
She could still, or she could do it by the, um, I mean, that might help a little bit, but it gets crowded at that table in this L shape. If there's any way to have the public here and keep something like this L shape, that would be ideal. I mean, I like the Zoom aspect.
Well, this table could move there.
Well, we could certainly keep the two, we could keep two tables on each end and make it a little more U-shaped and still allow for the public.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Um, we could certainly move, we could get rid of the table and put it this way and put something longer. Um, there are certainly things we can do to accommodate both, so that, that, it, I mean, when I came on my interview, everyone was kind of crammed there, so. You know, trying to shuffle papers around and
That's, that's how every meeting is.
Yeah, right, right.
And, um, I will tell you, it's hard as chair. You can't see. Um, and I experimented with, uh, moving down to the end so I could see the public and I could see the members, but it's still very, very difficult. Um, as far as masks go, I, I, um, picking up on, there's a bike club I'm in that does this and there's some stuff I've seen, I've, I've seen, um, you know, masks preferred but required if you're not fully vaccinated and two weeks out on our system, we're not going to card people. You know, I'd be comfortable with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I support the, that mask policy. That's, uh, what I'd like to, I'd like to make sure that we're being, um, very conscious of, of public health, especially if folks aren't vaccinated in the room, they should be wearing a mask. I, I think that's just appropriate and, and safe. And then also if people are immunocompromised or feel like they should be wearing a mask, they should wear a mask in, in this space as well. Um, and I think we should reward folks for getting vaccinated, which means if you're vaccinated and two weeks out, you should be in here without a mask. So I like all of that. Um, I like the hybrid format for this, uh, meeting as provided, obviously, if, if you as chair are comfortable, uh, staring at thousands of places. But I think maybe you'll be the first one to, to go through that, so that would be exciting. Uh, but I, I'd like to keep it for equity sake. I think it, it's great for working parents who need to be home because they're, you know, they're kids, it's, it's dinner time, it's, it's go to bedtime and they can actually join for, you know, an agenda item that, that matters to them. Uh, so I prefer to keep that alive. Um, but I'd love to see people in the room because I think there's, that, that's what government is, it's the people. And so I'd like to see like real people in here who, you know, will stand up and say something and that would be, would be nice, uh, to see. Um, the question I do have though is regards to public hearings and whether we would keep those virtual or if we would bring them in. I kind of like the idea of virtual. I think it allows a lot of folks, especially professionals, if you have lawyers coming in, you know, it is, it is much easier for them to try to get on and off in our meetings.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I would feel comfortable the other way. I don't really have a strong preference, but I thought that may be an important one for us to consider of how we want to handle those public hearings. Uh, you know, this one obviously I think worked very well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and, um, I think it just makes it easier on folks from, from traveling in and out at, at 8:00 PM on a, you know, on a Tuesday. So, uh, that was the only other, other suggestion I had otherwise. Um, I like what everyone has said.
Yeah, I, I really, I mean, I've been so amazed actually at how many people, you know, are willing to come and watch because they don't have to drive in and um, though I do, I mean, to both what Zach and Megan said, you know, it's nice to have, you know, at least some humans here and, um, particularly, I think for, for the recognition kind of things. Um, but you know, even, even the one we've had to interview people on the screen, it's not, it's not terrible and they, they don't know that they're larger than life in here, so, you know. And, and most of the time, the technology has worked and I, I mean, I think that's what's really nice, at least for our, our board, we can do this. Um, you know, and I hope that the other boards can start thinking about, I mean, for the off nights, at the very least, the ones who, who don't meet the same time as we do, um, that they can, you know, see if that can work for them. And I think you bring an interesting idea around the public hearings, but I think tonight it certainly worked and particularly when you have to bring in an attorney, you know, we're saving the, the applicant's money if they don't have to spend, you know, three hours for an attorney instead of an hour or whatever. Um, so, um, I think that we should continue to try that and, and until it doesn't work, that we can assume that that would work as well, but, um, so, yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to say, is there anything preventing us moving forward legally from being able to do public hearings via Zoom? Nope, so there's nothing preventing allowing the public to participate remotely. So, either, even if the law changes, right now, we can absolutely offer that. It's strictly the board and allowing in-person
Okay.
participation, but we can allow, uh, right now, I have the Zoom accounts and I told department heads this today. Um, I have the town Zoom accounts through December 31st, uh, with every expectation that we would, um, using CARES Act extend it for another year anyways.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that, quite frankly, it's easy. I mean, it's easy for a department head meeting, just everyone sit in their office and jump on a Zoom. I mean, it does make things a little bit easier.
Mm-hmm.
I would agree to Zach's point, public hearings, attorneys, engineers. Uh, I know some boards, it's difficult to look at plans, obviously, on a screen. Um, but we could offer it as an either or. I mean, I have no problem, you know, we could certainly rearrange things and make some space here. Um, but offer that as an alternative, that if you want to participate remotely, here's a Zoom link if you want to come in person. Um, I guess my feeling or my, I just wanted to make sure that even if the fully remote passes, that this board is ready to welcome people back, starting at your next meeting. Um, so that being the case, we will continue everything else, just I'll put some chairs out and we'll rearrange the room a little bit differently. Put some signage up about masks. Um, but regardless, so the, the vote that takes place really won't impact us, it'll impact others and how they feel. Um, I will say there are some boards that are considering a mask policy, which is fine. Uh, some boards are contemplating meeting outdoors because they're not comfortable meeting in person. Um, so if the legislation does not happen, you will see some creative, um, meetings taking place until folks really are comfortable um, with being back in, in closed space again, but.
I have a question about other boards having, um, so we have the luxury of, of your technological savvy and also, um, having, you know, others, that you have other support, you have other staff. Um, so boards and committees that don't have staff members or don't have, um, perhaps a lot of, of, um, you know, a person who is really comfortable with technology and kind of watch a whole bunch of things. Is there, um, and then you, you don't have to answer this tonight, but I, you know, can we consider a way to support people that would like to be able to meet remotely if they're allowed to, um, you know, a way for them to use this room and get, I, I mean, I don't know what, I don't know what I'm asking, but I, um.
I think I know what you're asking. Um, so I can tell you, I've heard from, um, for instance, Kathy's asked me to show her, she's going to try and use the room on our off nights to use this setup. I talked to Karen for zoning board, um, not so much this room, um, but we talked about giving her a laptop that if they have a, you know, more with the remote participation, that I could, we could set up a Zoom for them to participate remotely. Um, I think the preference of some of those, quite frankly, I think if the legislation passes, a majority of the boards are going to stay fully remote. I would be surprised if boards start meeting in person, um, because I really I would be surprised if boards start meeting in person, um, cause I really, the the, I got a ton of feedback from chair persons, um, when the email came out, I kept saying, this is not our law, I mean, this is not, this is the state of emergency and we have to follow the open meeting law, like, this is not a policy that we're implementing. Um, but people are, people are nervous, they're still not ready, so.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I do expect it will pass, um, there's a lot of pressure on the state to get this done across the board, cause attorneys are pushing for it, engineers are pushing, it just has made things so much easier, and the public is pushing for it.
Mm-hmm.
So, I would be surprised if it does not pass. Uh, that being said, you know, we can certainly do something, we just don't have the resources to accommodate every board and committee that doesn't have somebody that can you know, I'm I'm happy to show anybody how to use this room. Um, scheduling and things like that, we can work around, but, um, having people available or resources available might be a little difficult.
Great.
Thank you. Jim?
Point to clarify, um, I too think it's going to pass, I think the legislature is like the kid in college who played hacky sack until two o'clock in the morning and then then started working on the paper he had to do the next day, but, um, did we just decide that if it passes, we're going to invite the public back nevertheless? I would be in favor.
Yes, I believe, either way, either way, yes.
Yeah, right.
We all.
I think for this board, the the vote at the legislature is not gonna impact us, we are, starting at the next meeting, we will allow
Right, that's. It's not gonna work, yeah.
Okay. That's okay, okay.
um, the public to be present while still providing a Zoom link.
Good.
Yep.
Just add one more thing, which is, I I would like to encourage certain boards, especially when it's sort of peak time, like Finance Committee, January through town meeting, you know, encouraging them to use this space and 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 sort of this format, because I think, uh, some of the questions we had at town meeting
Mm-hmm.
are very much discussed at these, where what are the alternatives, what kept being that question, it's a really good question, but it's discussed Finance Committee and at Select Board before we get to town meeting, and so, I'd like to see that used more, because I think maybe folks will see like, oh wow, you can actually engage in the alternatives and think about what you wanna go through, and so, I'd like to see if we could think about different boards and what may be their peak time or important meetings or you know, whatever that is, and try to see if we can have them and encourage them to use this space, to me, this is, should be their space to use as well and 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 I'd like to see that, so.
I would also encourage boards and committees, now that they've spent sixteen months on Zoom
Mm-hmm.
to work with Stew TV and televise the meetings.
Mm-hmm. Right.
I've been told that people won't serve if they have to be televised, but now we've gone with people televised and filmed, so.
Right.
You know what, let's just move right into getting some of these meetings back on cable, so people can stay home and watch them and re-watch them and
Right. Yeah.
Uh, cause I think, you know, they have that ability with Zoom, so.
Right.
Right. I would encourage boards and committees to consider that.
Remember those days when it just changed everything, all of a sudden, wait, the cameras are on and now we're grandstanding and now we're not talking or, you know, I mean, people got very, and now it's like, yeah, whatever. You know, I mean.
Yeah, I I
But, but it's.
There are holdout boards.
Yeah.
Um, who, I think, I think it is time that they got with the program. You know, I I think this has shown many of us, including me. I mean, I was concerned about making, I can't believe it now, I was concerned about making credibility determinations, that sounds so pompous, but, you know, will I be able to tell if someone's lying and, you know, this was more for my job. But, I, I couldn't tell whether they were lying in person anyway. In no worse shape with this, and I've just gotten used to, but but you just have to get over that hub.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, so we don't need to make a vote, but we we, the this, the agreement of the team is that we'll we'll welcome people in the next meeting.
Yes.
That's great. Great. Um, okay, so liaison discussion, so I know I've had individual conversations, you know, just over the year, I would say, actually, around, um, you know, we have this list of liaisons, we appoint, you know, we we agree on who goes where every year. Um, but I I certainly personally sensed, um, both reluctance and then, uh, um, unevenness and how it was both the perception by in each individual select board member, but then also even by the committees, like, what does it mean to have a liaison? And what do we expect from from the rep, what do we expect from the, you know, sort of behavior from the committees? So, I think it's time that we we have a a little broader discussion about what is our role with these lia- liaisons? Um, you know, what do we want from them, um, is there still value? And and particularly, is there a better way to get information? I mean, I think, I I I was trying to remember, um, from my last round, uh, ten plus years ago, when we didn't have liaisons that much, or it certainly wasn't that, I mean, I remember things like Trytown and, um, school committee, but I don't remember having every committee having a liaison, um, from the select board. And obviously, it takes a lot of our time, if you're gonna be a really, really responsible, you know, liaison, you're going to a lot of meetings, cause some of these boards meet a lot, I mean, luckily, Planning Board actually is the same time, cause then you don't have to go to four meetings a year. But, but anyway, so, um, but I I mean, I think that, you know, frankly, one of my thoughts, and I think I've discussed this with at least some of you, is, um, maybe we all need to be hearing occasionally from these committees and we should have the committees come to us, so we can have a discussion about what are their priorities, what are they thinking for, you know, not just pre-town meeting, but just sort of what are their work plans for the year, um. Cause I think, I mean, some of the the work they're doing is really important and we should be all, as a, we are, we are not, as we discussed last time, we are a board of five, we're not a board of one, no one person can make a decision, so to to not be part of that discussion, um, to have all of us having some say in it, I think, um, you know, I think we're we're losing out on that information, you know, potentially. So, I'd like to just open it up, I don't know that we have to make a decision tonight, I I I would actually like to not make a decision on, um, say, if we're gonna move forward with liaisons that we don't decide tonight, but I'd like to just have that sort of discussion about what are your thoughts about, you know, how's how, what's the best way to communicate with all these committees that we have and and what would you like to see, so, yes.
Can I start, cause I feel like, I have a lot of feelings about this, um.
Yeah, nobody else.
Let me tell you how many of these liaison assignments I had last year, no, I'm just kidding. Um, I think what, so I was the school committee liaison, the planning board liaison, the Lake Boone Commission liaison.
You are gonna tell us.
Trytown, I, a lot of them, right? So, I I do think it's important to have a Trytown liaison, say. I don't know that we need a planning board liaison, and I will say that, because I think it would be incredibly helpful if the planning board came and just gave us a kind of ten thousand foot overview of what six months in the future looks. Same with Conservation Commission, same with School Committee, um, same with FinCom. I mean, it would be nice to just sort of have a meeting where they kind of give a presentation for twenty minutes and we're all caught up and we can ask questions. And it's, to me, that seems the most efficient use of everyone's time. Um, it's because we are recording, it's the most transparent for everyone, um, and so, I feel like, but things like Trytown, things like the Lower Village Revitalization Subcommittee, there are some things that I do think that it's helpful to have a a select board representative or a liaison for. Um, but some of the bigger ones, you know, I wasn't going to four-hour-long school committee meetings, quite frankly. I was connecting with the chair to say, whatever's coming up, just give me a heads up, or what do you need, or what do I need to bring forward, kind of situation. Um, but I was not sitting through the the meat of those meetings, so. That's all I have to say on that question.
Other thoughts?
Um, I think the main thing I have to add is I can tell you how the story started. And I can also tell you that it has gotten completely out of hand. It started, I believe it was Steve Dungyan's idea, Steve Dungyan, a revered former select, uh, personal friend of mine. And it started, my memory is, because of the planning board, that we were, and and we even saw it this year, there's always something on the warrant at the end usually, some incomprehensible thing that they have there that we don't even see until we get a draft of the warrant in April. We we have only the barest of understanding. And you s- inevitably, we start getting questions, it didn't really happen much this year, but it has happened in other years. Um, and Steve wanted to have a a select board liaison with the planning board, just to keep us apprised. I do think his term was of what witches brew they were cooking up. Um, and and we were having difficulty, and this is the one thing.
Mm-hmm.
And I I know as chair, in recent years, you can't get them to come here, because it is, they meet on the same night
Mm-hmm.
the planner can sometimes spare you ten to fifteen minutes in between things.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it is, it's very difficult to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I do think we should be relying a bit more on the town administrator as our liaison for at least the departments that are here in town building, um, and and public safety. Um, the one exception to that would be, you know, when there's a big thing going on, I remember several years ago, the big triple E crisis, but together with some contamination in Lake Boone, and we had the Board of Health coming here, do exactly what you've talked about. Give us an update straight from the horse's mouth. Now, that, of course, was in an era when the town administrator had de facto limits to what he would pay attention to. Didn't involve a budget, he really wasn't going to keep us updated on it. And that was part of the motivation for the liaison, we we had no other way really of getting information.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm glad to hear at least some voices in favor of scaling this back, cause it desperately needs it. The show and tell that we do at the end of every meeting.
Yeah, I don't wanna get on that.
But, uh, I'd like to rely on the town administrator a bit more, except in special cases, triple E is a good, certainly, you know, a pandemic, um, but um, and we may have to think about the planning board, um, you know, and how to effectively stay up on what they are doing, cause they always, they're always, they're always at the forefront of something.
Oh, absolutely, and, right.
And I remember, seven years ago, when marijuana was a big thing and they were proposing something on it.
I was there.
We really had a hard time.
Mm-hmm.
We were finding out what they were planning at the same time members of the public were. And we, we we had it.
Oh, but you had a liaison at that point, and that liaison was not reporting that information, and I think that was part of the problem, so I get what you're saying.
Right.
Absolutely. Absolutely true.
Yes.
Um, but we were getting nothing.
Yeah, yeah, so I do think.
May, oh, sorry. You have let other people talk.
Yeah, no, no, absolutely.
I'm done.
I mean, and I I wanna just say, I think we need to also be clear that we're talking like committee to committee, not not employees, like Denise is definitely responsible for public safety, for example.
That's a good point.
Those are employees, they don't have committees.
Yeah.
That's, that's, you know, and same, really, frankly, whether it's Jessie or Kathy or, you know, staff report to Denise, we're supposed to be talking to the chairs of the board or the members of the committee, not not to the employees, I mean, not that they can't come, but that that would be our primary focus should be, so, that, just stop there. Zach or Courtney?
I think, um, I really like, I, you know, again, planning would be the exception perhaps, but, um, I like having a committee or board report directly to us, because then someone who has a good grasp of the information is gonna present it to us, instead of, you know, passing it down the line and trying to to interpret it. Um, I I, you know, and I get that that there was a point at which we weren't feeling connected to, you know, that we weren't getting information, you know, I I would be delighted if Denise is happy to do so, you know, that it seems to make a lot of sense to to use her involvement with all these, you know, with with groups, uh, to to pass the information on us, um. I, uh, I think there are some committees that it would be perhaps useful to to have liaisons, and I don't know how to how to pass those around, um, certainly, I I also found the workload, uh, bit much. Uh, overwhelming would be the word. Um, so those are, those are my thoughts.
Yeah, I think the telephone tech, sort of feeling of like, you're supposed to be reporting on something that actually was quite technical and like, uh, they were talking about, I think. You know, I mean, I, yeah, I've been in that.
No, so, I mean, I I, there were, there was one group I couldn't find out when their meetings were, and so, I couldn't attend.
Couldn't go, right.
Which was great, but.
It's another problem in there.
Right, right, right.
Right. Zach, thoughts?
Yeah, so I I I guess I come at this from a slightly different, uh, perspective, having watched committee meetings where there was a liaison present and then hearing what the liaison said back to the board. And there was differences of opinion from what I saw from what they saw, but it's because it's an interpretation thing, right? You're sort of watching, everyone's watching these meetings and and so they're coming back with that and and I think at the end of the day, uh, I think it's really important that the same information reaches the select board from the experts, so I completely agree with with your point there and and I sort of witnessed this happen and then sort of get corrected and meetings down the line and sort of more information became apparent, um. And and so, it was, it was interesting sort of watching that. Um, I think that there are alternatives, I think that we do need to talk about what information are we seeking and why are we seeking it? This is about, to me, a strategic plan for the town, we have to be talking with the planning board, we have to be talking with Finance Committee, we have, like, this is critical for for us actually coming together and trying to say, we have large items coming up, how are we going to organize them, what does that mean? And that's the information we're seeking, so I think we need to be smart about what that liaison role is and what information we're seeking. Having information for information's sake, I'm not sure is doing is doing much. Uh, and I think that some of the liaison reports I would hear is just sort of, well, this was information, and it was like, but where is it going? And so, um, I I wanna make sure that we're focused on that when we're maybe tailoring this list a little bit of of really what what information is is very useful for this board. And the third thing is, although I agree that sub-departments under Denise should not have a liaison role, I think that we have to keep in mind that as a policy board, we have to be connected with departments that are making policy, and it should be about policy only. And so, I think about it as a as an alternative, it's not a liaison, it's a proper working, you know, task force or subcommittee, depending on what we wanna call it, based on our policies that were just recently discovered, which I learned of a of a new term that we could maybe use. Um, but that it's meant to be, you know, for example, in policing, it's meant to be policing reform and accreditation process, and it has a specific task, it has a goal, it has a supporting mission, it's talking policy, you know, Denise is always present, because I think that's really important in these. But it has a purpose for our board, again, to try to see how we can move some of these larger projects, right? Accreditation is a very large project, a very large policy project. I think we can find rules on these, you know, task forces that I think are meaningful, right? No making of decisions that comes to the full board, it's really meant to ensure that strong policy, groups of policies are coming together, that we're we're focusing on that. And I could also think about other, maybe, um, issues in town, not necessarily committees, but other issues where these, I'd rather have subcommittee on on climate change and how we're going to talk about that in our town, versus just having people show up at meetings where the information isn't really helping us plan for the alternatives, plan for the town warrant, plan for how we're going to help lead this town and guide this town through what I think are going to be some large capital projects along the way with with an already high tax rate, and so, I I I want us to really think about these in in that way and try to be strategic, and so, I I would love to see it trimmed down, but strategically trimmed down, I think was being suggested, and think about how we want to navigate this. Um, and the last thing I'll say with regards to public safety is, I I, there may be a use of a standing public safety subcommittee. Uh, there are a lot of public safety issues in town, people that complain, I know there's sort of, you know, Streets Committee, there's other sort of committees, but should an incident happen in town, it may be important that there is a a public safety committee, uh, that that can meet or help determine should should that that happen. Um, I know we have our own emergency response, but we can think about, I think, again, strategically what that looks like. But it is very much meant to be at the level not interfering with day-to-day supervision, not making suggestions individually of what policies are are good or not good, it is really meant to be a role of making sure this board is making the right policy decisions and and supporting our amazing, you know, police chief, fire chief, uh, highway department superintendent in in making the policies they need. And making sure they're talking also how we can help them communicate, you know, across, and you know, Denise, I know that you you play a lot of that role, but on the policy board side, I think we can, we can try to really help in that in that process and drive that forward and make sure we're being supportive of your role as possible in these policies as they're as they're being developed. That's, that's my liaison.
Well, and I I think, um, I I hear what you're saying, especially around the policies, around the sort of big things around public safety, at least, um, but I've also seen some committees who, in a vacuum, have been creating their own policies that really shouldn't be, you know, and and that's that's the other part of bringing it back in and say, okay, well, see, this is, this is what you have authority, I mean, and I think this goes to a larger issue that, um, you know, I mentioned when I did the training, I think Jim went, the training on, um, with, um, Magic or M A P C around, you know, good way, you know, training people about running meetings and what is it, what's the role of chair and what's the role of these committees? I think, um, some of that has gotten a little out of hand and and, you know, I mean, really, it's been a vacuum, so they've just kept on doing what they did or they've evolved and they've said, well, you know, we should do this better, so we're gonna write a policy, I'm like, uh, you're not supposed to be writing policies for the town. So, you know, I think, um, that that too can be, you know, by somehow. So, you know, I think um that that too can be, you know, by somehow bringing in some of these groups or just sort of reviewing. I think, again, with with Denise here, it's it is a very different ballgame. I mean, I think I don't I don't worry that we don't have, she's got chairs meeting, you know, from every department regularly. Like, that's a huge improvement for their own communication and that that's only good for all of us, so. But I think, you know, when I look at the list that that um we had this past year, I mean, there are the ones that are considered committee memberships, which I believe from looking at them that are sort of by either by bylaw or statute or in some cases the state, you know. There are specific roles, uh, committee roles that we have, which is a much smaller list than the liaison contact list. So I guess I would ask people to particularly look at the liaison and contact list and, you know, just think about it for next time, like, what ones do you think we really should be focusing on uh um both for that bringing them in, you know, we will talk, I I've put it down on my list for the planning session to talk about sort of what Zach was talking about, like. Let's think about what we want them to come in for, you know, um, you know, where do we start with? We're not gonna start on July fifteenth and say, hey, you know, planning board, come to a meeting, you know, we're gonna we we need to think about what it is our our goals for asking them to come in to to take the time to meet with us. But um I would also say the benefit of us being televised and and seamlessly having this internet is that the community will be able to hear from some of those boards that they otherwise wouldn't hear from. And I think someone sort of, you know, made allusions to that, but I think that's really important too, that that people understand, like, what does? I mean, they hear capital planning at town meeting, but they don't know what they do during the year. And and that's same with most of the committees, actually, I expect. Um, so I think that's another one. So, um, yeah, cuz I think, I mean, I think the um, the top part of the list, the committee memberships, I'm not sure if we can change those or if there's other ones that are, um, I mean, maybe it needs to be a little updated, I don't know. But um, but I think the liaisons is where we can talk about, like, which ones do we really wanna have a structured um relationship in a liaison kind of thing. It's not like we have to throw them all out or, you know, it's not all or nothing, but we can have a much shorter list. Yes, Jim?
Yeah, something, what Mr. Burns was saying got me thinking about something. Specifically when he was saying, you know, we ought to know why we're calling boards in to meet with us and it should be related to policy. I think that is extremely true. The flip side of that is there's always the issue of the week. And there's always something that we as individuals see that just ticks us off. We need to know more about it. Especially for those of you who see yourself running for reelection, you've got someone you need to respond to, you need an answer and you need an answer fast. The liaison assignment morphed into a way to get that information. It was one of its inappropriate uses, not the only one, but one of its inappropriate uses. Unfortunately though, as pseudo amateur politicians, we continue to have a need for that kind of information. And it is a legitimate need. We need to get some answer real quick as to why so-and-so did, why I hear so-and-so did something. I don't know what that way is. I don't think it's, and I think this is sort of what Mr. Burns was saying, I don't think it's calling in the whole board. So, let's hear about what happened on, you know, Tuesday, the eighth. But it's gonna be something. Now, I think it's, you talk to Denise.
Yeah.
You know, Denise, I I need an answer. Um, I think that's the go-to. But maybe maybe there's something else there. But I I agree with what you said, I just, there's that need, and until we find a way to satisfy that need. It may not be the liaison role, but something else is gonna get morphed inappropriately.
My my, uh, go ahead Denise. Well, I just, I mean, my experience with that kind, cuz I I know what you're talking about, but I, it does tend to be something that needs to go to the staff person. And in the past, there was no one to ask to deal with it. And now I, you know, I've learned quickly, like, oh, I can ask Denise, and I I have to say, it's not a priority, you don't have to do it today. But I usually get an answer very quickly, you know, whether I want it or not, because cuz that's usually where the answer lies, it's not necessarily a committee member. Uh, I mean, some chairs, you know, are as reliable as their staff people, you know, I mean, equally, you know, full of information. But I'd say that that's been my experience with that kind of need for the the quicker information.
Right. So you're saying you've learned that the way, the, that now the way for the quicker information is to go.
Go through.
Yeah, I I have to.
And 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 really the appropriate, and so, I mean, if it is about going to staff, it really should be going, you know, trying to stop my my reflex, which is to go to the staff person directly, you know, with the exception maybe Linda, because, you know. I'm sorry, I just have worked with Linda for too long, but.
Well, I'm not gonna go through Denise to talk to Kathy.
Yep. Uh, but Denise, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to comment on the, you know, the comments from both Jim and Zach. And um, I think Jim, you just mentioned, you know, it should be about policy, which I agree to at some extent. But I think for the boards that you appoint, there should be maybe a more robust discussion about, you know, if there is projects that you should be aware of or if there are concerns that the board has where you're making the appointments to those boards. Um, certainly the elected boards that you could have more of a policy, um, higher level discussion about, you know, what's coming down or funding or things like that. But, I mean, I would say that the appointed boards tend to be the ones that need a little more guidance.
Yeah.
Um, a little more structure. And I think it could be helpful to have some of that discussion about things that they are working on um here. Um, because I think there's more input that you can offer to those appointed boards versus just policy decisions.
I see that.
I did have one and it's more just a, until we get to this utopian world we're talking about of the future. Um, Tom is still currently listed as a liaison to certain groups. I'm not sure what we wanna do to bridge that gap. Obviously, I'm not listed on there, there is now a gap. Um, some of these may be ones that we're talking about potentially removing. Um, but um, sort of my thought is until we remove, it may be important to for for a motion to be made today to have me replace Tom and where he's at, just as a stopgap, so that way there is somebody there until we get this utopian future world that we wanna figure out done. Um, I just wanna note that even though I know that it's maybe a larger discussion of reorganizing, but I feel like we're all sort of talking about there needs to be a restructuring first, and that's gonna happen, but it's going to take some time. And the appointment, you know, obviously has lapsed, and so I just wanted to raise that cuz it was a minor thing, just wanted to.
I I think I'm fine with that for anything he's appointed for, but honestly, he was public safety and I don't think that you need to be talking to public safety directly. Like, I I mean, that's that's one that I feel fairly strongly about, nixing anyway, just because they're employees of the town under Denise. I mean, I really, I didn't ever quite understand that particular liaisonship, so.
As opposed, except for the, what you were talking about in terms of the the big load of policy, for example, with the police department.
Yes, I mean, that's like a, that's a restructure completely separate thing.
Right, so that's different.
But that's for the whole board.
Right.
Right, or that we'll figure out how that's, that's a whole process overall.
Yeah, I just, I don't.
May I make a?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I have a comment that I'll make.
You may make a different suggestion. I only discovered recently that we even list select board liaisons on the town website and individual departments. And my first reaction was, why? Why? Why does this even matter to the members of the public? It just fosters frankly this incorrect assumption that we have some of, the individual has some official role. I would suggest that until we sort all of this out, and it sounds like we have more than the beginnings of a consensus, until we get specific on it, we just remove all of it.
Well, that actually came up, at least from my my committees that I was liaison to, wanted me to be listed there. And and in fact, and and it started the conversation actually, which has led to this, because the, of the different committees I was on, very different ideas of what my role was.
And that actually makes me feel even stronger that it it would be better to to just not have it there, to send those boards and committees the message, as an individual, none of us has any role. I, this whole liaison thing gives the wrong message to the departments. Just last week, I got a, was it a procurement, a a real detailed procurement question from the library. You know, cuz we're in the middle of a procurement, clearly something that should go to, and I just forwarded it to Denise.
Right.
And it comes from this liaison role. I don't think there's anything that I've done to in to engender it. I've I've run out of my way to try to discourage them from asking me questions. It could be liaison combined with being a lawyer, I guess, but. I I would prefer to just take our names off of all of it. That's part of sending the message, that as individuals, we have no authority.
I would second that.
Yeah.
That is gonna be my.
Okay. Um, so in terms of the the, you know, ones that Tom is listed on, should we just um make a quick motion to name Zach in those particular things until now?
What I'd like to do is table it.
Oh.
Table.
And and just, once we've, once we've figured out.
Right.
I mean, I I propose that we do not liaise.
Yes.
Yeah.
Until we further discuss liaison.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, I think, yes.
Right, right.
Yeah, no, I I was actually, I was actually heading toward a motion tonight to remove all of our names as liaisons from the from the website entirely, until we've figured.
Yeah.
Yeah, and just until we do, okay.
I second that. As a.
Okay. Is that a formal motion?
Oh, I'll make it a formal motion. I, whatever I just said, I move that we remove our our names as as liaisons from individual uh pages on our website.
Zach?
So I just have a a question. So does that mean that we we don't have liaisons or we're just not listing them?
I think it for, I I think it means we, that's a good question. I think it means we're just not listing it. Well, I think our, the actual.
And to Courtney's point, though, she would recommend that you do not liaise until this is. Do not go to any meetings, do not do anything.
Yeah, so we so we suspend our liaison functions.
Excesses of liaison. So would you add that as a friendly amendment to your motion?
Absolutely, so and and then we all suspend our liaison functions.
Yes.
Until we sort all of this out.
Now, let's talk about the particular needs.
I second all of that.
Any any other comments yet?
Just for clarity, just to make sure, the the ones up here, though, that are committee memberships, that is excluded from your motion.
Those are different.
Absolutely.
That that's a separate conversation.
I'd like to make a comment. Zach, this is not any way personal, I just.
No, no.
Oh, no, 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 no.
I don't think.
I like this motion, I like this motion a lot better than when I was putting on the table.
Yeah, right.
I was trying to be polite to not tell you all you should stop, so.
Any other conversation, comments?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, okay. So I would ask, though, that at the next meeting, we we do have the next round of the conversation around, are there? I, well, I I maybe I'm, if I'm not pushing it too fast, I would like to, and maybe we do it as part of the planning session? I'm, okay, now I'm talking out loud, uh, or thinking out loud, but um, cuz I would like to at least say, sort of, I, you know, I think Megan started to sort of say, there might be some of these that we wanna continue, so.
Absolutely.
If you just bring your thoughts on, are there ones that we think are important enough um that we still have a liaison, as opposed to then we'll have a larger discussion in our planning session around, you know, if we want committees to come to us, which ones and what what's the, what's the agenda, what's the goal of that process? So, so for the next meeting, and I guess, I mean, in terms of the ones that are committee memberships, you know, we'll just clarify which ones are sort of by, I mean, I know Magic sort of has that seat for our selectmen's rep. Um, and I believe M A P C as well, um.
And capital planning, I think, is probably driven by the bylaw or charter. I think the rest of them are ad hoc committees that the board created.
Okay.
I would like so.
So.
Or um, complete streets, technically, I think the planning board created it.
Complete streets doesn't even show up on the list, yeah, that's what I was gonna say, I was like, wait, Jim's a complete street, so where's that?
That's not even on here.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not even here, so.
Yeah.
Technically.
I don't know what, whether the trustee, I mean, the, I'm I'm a member, a voting member, I don't know what it is.
Right, are you a voting member?
Yeah.
We'll do, I'll do some research on them.
Okay, okay.
Uh, because I would say to Megan's earlier point, the tri-town should be up in the topper, top category.
Yes, right.
That there should be a designate when and if tri-town resumes meetings. But so, yes, I think, but town hall restoration, obviously, that was a committee that this board put together and decided apparently you wanted to select board members, which we should have a conversation about, thank you.
Yeah, right.
I think low uh, the cable access advisory, I would assume is probably a committee that this board put together to negotiate the cable contract and lower village revitalization, again, I think this board created it, so, um.
Planning board did.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I actually think complete streets was created by this board. On the recommendation of the planning board, and I think lower village was created by the planning board.
It's a planning board subcommittee. I, we need some clarification on it because.
So, so then like, okay.
We need to do some research on those.
Yeah.
I wanted to make one more quick comment about having people come and present to us.
Please.
I think it'd be really nice to foster a, um, I think we're well on our way, a um a uh mood of collaboration and and not that you are going to come to.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
To the very form of meeting and be on TV and have to make a report, but to just come, let us, you know, just
Yeah.
just say something and then and, you know, have conversations throughout the year as necessary or something, sort of.
Right.
Yes.
And if I may.
Yes.
I think having that collaboration from the policy angle that this board is supposed to be, it really is what can, what policy can we work towards to to help this committee, you know, to to achieve the goals that you are trying to set out for yourself? Um, and and, yeah, I absolutely second the collaboration, but cuz cuz when I'm saying the boards come to present before us, it's not like a, you're going to the principal's office kind of thing. It's like a, so what can we help you with? Like, what what can we do to to make this happen? And I would love to see that happen. Yeah.
Uh, just two things, um, I I would love to see us also help guide the appointed boards in what we'd like them to help us do as well, cuz a lot of these people are deep experts in these subjects and we should be asking them to guide us too, and I think that's really important. Um, and the second thing is, if um I can relieve anybody of a committee membership.
Well, Zach, actually.
There you go.
If you'd like to be also at town hall.
As a as a polite suggestion, that that is just merely, um, I know that as we're sort of navigating this moving forward, I I know that you know, some of y'all have been on certain committees for a long time, not sure if you would like some turnover, I know some of you are sitting on committees, maybe you'd like to take a break from, you know, just sort of maybe you could think about that for for next time.
Yeah, absolutely. I think once we know what the list is and then, cuz I don't I don't think the assumption is that any of us are staying on the committees that we've been on.
Great, I would, I appreciate that.
I mean, well, I'll just speak of myself.
I I have always found that I learn by by doing new things and and, you know, whether it's a new role that I belong to or whether it's um going to a new group to.
Yeah, yeah, yes. And I think modeling that also for trying to get new people to on some of the other appointed committees, that would be it's always good ideas, come for new ideas, so. Great, okay, well, thank you for that, that was really helpful. Um, town administrator's report.
Yes, and I will try and keep it as brief as I can. Um, so the town buildings will be reopening on Tuesday, July sixth, so we are excited to welcome the public back. There's been some comments about why aren't we opening when the state of emergency ends? Um, and quite frankly, I think I mentioned to this, to in this meeting previously, that uh, we were all expecting the state of emergency to end in mid-August for our September first reopening, and then the governor sprung it on us that it's happening. Uh, we are doing deep cleanings of the buildings, um, and I have requested that employees take their vacation time from two years ago before we go into the new fiscal year, so people are taking time off, offices are closed off and on, so um, we're gonna get all that out of the way and be ready to go on July sixth. Uh, we will resume rental of the facilities on September first. Again, we're gonna use the time from July sixth to get town um and department events up and running, council on aging, recreation, uh, public meetings and things like that, and figure out cleaning schedules and just scheduling in general, so that we can then start renting it out to local entities. Um, I've had some requests from MMA to come back here to the community center. Uh, we have the town groups that have been using town hall and Pompo, so we wanna get that back up and running September first. I believe you all saw an email that came out from uh the town clerk regarding the open meeting law webinar trainings. Um, I would encourage everybody, this board, other boards, department heads, employees um to take and participate in one of those trainings. Um, if you've not received the information, let me or Linda know. Um, there's a lot of, and I don't mean this to this board specifically, although I do have some some concerns. Um, I think there's a lot of communication taking place outside of meetings. For instance, I was involved in a board that I saw that they were deciding who was gonna be chair through email. These things cannot happen. Um, they are a violation of the open meeting law, things need to be done in public meetings. Uh, that goes for text messages, emails, phone calls, face-to-face meetings. These things cannot happen, um they are a violation of the open meeting law, things need to be done in public meetings, that goes for text messages, emails, phone calls, face-to-face meetings. Um and what I think people often forget is if I'm a board member and I have a conversation with Courtney, and then Courtney has a conversation with Jim, and Jim has a conversation with Zach, we have now violated the open meeting law, even though there's not three of us in a room together, we've now played telephone and everybody has been privy to that information, so again, I encourage folks to take that training. Um board members are personally liable if there's an open meeting law violation, um you can be hit with fines, you can be hit with something more, so please do yourself a favor. Um it's on the Attorney General's Division of Open Government website, or Linda or I have the links, um so I just encourage that. Um this Sunday, June thirteenth, Common Road will be closed from eight AM to one PM. Uh the First Parish Church will be holding their first in-person service in over a year, and they plan to have it outside. Um so they've worked with the chief, and he has granted their request to close the road for safety reasons, so just as a heads up to folks, that will be closed. Um Ellen, you already mentioned the a couple of things that were on the website, but I will just reiterate them, the Randall Library is holding a public Zoom forum tomorrow night to share information about library, the services, their restoration plans, um starts at six o'clock, the Zoom info is on our website, Facebook and Twitter. Um again, Smart is holding a Zoom forum on Monday the fourteenth at six thirty to gather input from residents on the homes proposed for Red Acre Road, again, info's website, Facebook and Twitter. Um this is a question I'll come back to, the Hudson Select Board was supposed to be reviewing the perambulation boundary letter at their meeting last night, but it was not on their agenda, so I will be following back up with them to see where that stands, um the, let's see, um we have a number of opportunity employment opportunities currently open that are on our website. Um as you all know, the assistant town administrator position that was approved at town meeting has been posted, I posted our fire chief position, our building commissioner position, and we have a couple highway driver laborer positions available, um and a part-time department assistant that will be shared between the planning department and the health department. Information on all of those can be found on our website, um I my questions to the board are, and I tried to find it, I couldn't really find um this is more, I guess, to Jim and Courtney who are on the board, um did Stowe declare a local state of emergency in regards to COVID? In addition to the s- state of emergency, if so, we should be looking to um end that at our next meeting as the state state of emergency, many towns chose to do that because of FEMA reimbursements, it was not a requirement, but many chose to do that as well as the state of emergency.
I don't recall doing that.
Okay, so that's good, I can cross that off. Um another question, again, more so to the veterans on the board, um the cultural council is looking to have their Stowe Culture Fest. Um quite honestly, the information they presented to me, live music, vendors, I would think it rises to the level of an entertainment license with this board. They have said in the past they have not done that, they've worked with recreation, they've gotten permission for them, um their festival is coming up on July fifteenth. Um I told them I would bring it to this board tonight and decide what you wanted to do, but to me, even though they're a boarding committee, I think they should present some create, especially if they're having vendors and live music, they wanna use Town Center Park, so I thought it should come to.
Yeah. Yeah.
So.
It's group.
Have to, I mean, it would have to be clear, public safety would have to be, especially.
So possibly, they've never done anything of that scale before.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um possibly, two things at at one time go through my head, um their events have triggered, in fact, I think it might have been a cultural council thing that triggered our policy, and this policy does exist, I haven't seen it recently, um about alcohol on town building premises.
Right.
Um and I forget where that huge issue wound up, but it is in writing somewhere. That was about the most they ever did, they had like an art show at Pompo and and served some wine. Um the issue of event licenses came up several years ago, I don't think in connection with the cultural council, I think in connection with a private entity, um and was delegated to uh our then administrative assistant staff to kind of draft something and just went nowhere.
Well, yes, because we've had two requests now, we have a bike race that you were involved with previously that's looking to hold a big event after their race with food and
It's the. It's the road race.
a thousand people, and again, I said you would need some type of event license, and when we pulled the paperwork, we have drafts of things that were written several years ago, nothing was finalized, there's no application, there's no, so I've told the ladies to start working on that
Right.
Yeah.
And.
because things are coming up, but I don't know how you feel about those licenses.
Right. Right, I for, so the road race, it was a road race, and we didn't, we had to come before the board to get
So.
whatever, we had to get.
You know, with both Stowe Conservation Trust, the run.
Yeah, I mean, that was, it was what it was, it was the.
The.
So many bike races, road races come before the board, technically, if you're closing off a public way, you need permission to do that, um but they often came before the board just as a way of publicizing their event, or many bike races that go through uh many towns, just for the sake, good public relations will give, the Pan Mass Challenge does this with all thirty-six towns they go through, whatever it is, they'll just go before the 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 a select board at every town, just to smooth everything over, so you don't want public safety call by surprise on that Saturday.
Hmm. Right.
But event licenses where you are cooking food, serving food, serving drink, and certainly alcohol, I'm assuming that, but that's separately.
Hmm.
Right, I don't think there's any alcohol on either of these requests.
The, that's a that's a completely separate thing, the scope of it, exactly what it encompasses has always been vague.
Support of health.
Well, that's certainly food or certain.
Well, they would need sign-offs, police, fire would have helped, but.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
But what this would entail, and I don't think, I don't think it's rocket science, I think you gotta contact maybe three or four towns and and get samples.
Right.
It entails probably a very short license about daytime, number of people, and then the big thing is the distribution, this goes to the police, goes to support health, goes period there.
Hmm. Hmm.
And I honest honestly, I don't know why it never happened, it never seemed.
Well, and I think we have it for rentals, right, I mean, it's essentially the same checklist.
No. It's similar, I mean, yes, it's similar, and and we'll absolutely take care of that, I just wanna make sure that that's what we should be doing because it hasn't been done, so if this board feels you should be issuing an event, there's a very basic blurb on the website as far as event licenses go, um and that's someone said, oh, it's on the website, and um but all it says under license for event permit is, and like I said, we found drafts, they just were never finished. Um entertainment licenses are required by Mass General Law and the Stowe Board of Selectmen, please contact the board in order to request an application and receive instructions on how to proceed.
Right.
Hmm.
You will need to schedule a date to appear before the selectmen at one of their regularly scheduled meetings in order to present your proposed event to the board. Please begin the application process well in advance, as public hearings may be required and the process can require up to six weeks.
Yeah, and and this is a perfect example of a committee that took upon itself to
So.
manage a policy, I mean, it's, this is recreation, I'm I'll just say it, I this is what I experienced as liaison.
No, no, this is the select board, this.
No, but no, I'm saying, but.
The cultural council.
Cultural council, you know, just because it's on what's considered recreation land does not mean that they get authority over it, and in fact
Cultural council.
they probably didn't even think to ask, like, public safety issues, um uh butters issues, I mean, you know, when you're gonna have a big and, you know, a thousand people versus, I don't know what the cultural council is expecting, but you know, if you're gonna have a big event, you don't just just assume that just because it's on a public park that it's okay, so.
Well, man, it it's bigger than that, and now this discussion is coming back to me, um there was some feeling on the then board similar to the feeling of, hey, we don't wanna interfere with people's right to have alcohol, not quite as strong as that, but 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 similar to hey, we don't wanna force people, just wanna have a party, that have to, you know, fill out all this paperwork, and I remember the, I remember Bill being extremely strong,
Yeah.
this was a liability issue.
Yes, this is liability, that's.
And the the example he used, and he is absolutely right, was not a town department, but a certain nonprofit located in the southern part of the town, noted for not complying with laws and having gigantic events, um and just basically thinking that it is not governed by the rules of society, and that is the main reason that this got, it it had, it it finally got support on the board, and then it just went nowhere at the staff level.
Hmm.
So we will take care of it for sort of non-department entities, do you feel the same standard should be for town boards and committees?
Right. Okay.
Which the cultural council is, they're a town committee.
Yes.
I'm against.
Okay, I mean, they won't have, obviously, liability insurance because they fall under us and things like that, but um I will see what they can get together for your next meeting
Right, yeah, right, right. Hmm.
in advance of their, because I I mean, I would agree, yes, they, all they do with recreation is reserve a space.
Right, right.
Getting all the other requirements would be.
Right, right.
Um so, and they are, like I said, they are um preparing for live music at Town Center, which could be a traffic issue and things like that.
Well, I mean, that's, yeah.
So when we talked about the, when we discussed and um hammered out our version at the time of the alcohol and town property um policy, one of the things that came up was that there were events that are like twelve people, and you know, the friends of the library, or maybe not, that's not a good example, I don't know, but there's something really small.
Yep.
And they want a champagne toast for one person, and so there's language in there that allows for a really small event that's still an event that triggers something, but you know, that there's also recognition that there are things that are gonna be large and just need to be dealt with, you know, and all the all the parameters need to be ticked off, and um I would encourage us to think about that.
Right. Hmm, the scale.
Really, it seems to me that a policy would just say, hey, if you think more than X number of people are gonna show up,
Yeah.
you just need to fill out the paperwork.
Hmm.
Right. Or I think it should be, you know, maybe some, if you're having a live band of some sort on town property, I mean, things like, if they're using town property, they should be coming before this board
Right. Yeah.
for permission anyways, um but there are definitely the policies for many towns, because we've already sent out notification, um there are different limits, fifty people and over,
Hmm.
um there's a checklist that if you're expecting X, Y, and Z, it triggers the permit, um so there are different things that we can do that can mitigate and not require sort of a small you know, uh folks sitting at the gazebo to have a little baby shower, you know, we need an event permit, um so we can certainly talk about those things, I think for
Right, right.
the cultural council specifically, um I'll have them just present something, maybe not on a formal application, because they are a town committee, and we'll get sign-offs from the respective boards before it comes before here, um and then we'll work on really formalizing and finishing this policy once and for all.
Okay.
Okay, um and then quickly, um.
Zach just had, what?
No, I'm sorry.
Um I I just wanted to sort of note something here, which is, I think it's really important we don't put the cart before the horse. I agree with you, Courtney, we need a policy, you can't be just saying, well, we're gonna do this one, and then our policy's gonna be something else, and then we're gonna end up with this weird exception we had at the very beginning because we said we need to rush and get it done. I'd rather us balance this out, I like what you just proposed, and that was in that balancing out of like, having a proposal here, but is is it a full license, I think it shouldn't be until we decide what that policy is, what these expectations are, and I think then we need to move forward with enforcing that and and ensuring that that happens, and so I wanna make sure we don't we don't have this weird exception where they're expecting twenty people, and we say the limit's fifty, and but we've made them go through this whole process, especially with the being the cultural council, I wanna ensure that we're we're really thinking about this and and we're trying to be as transparent as we can on the policy, so I'd love to see that, and if it's urgent, I think that maybe that's something we should prioritize getting done, if we are seeing multiple events now, especially with COVID lifting, I imagine there may be people just ready to go party, and so we should maybe jump on that to make sure we can be responsive.
It's not great.
Yeah. Um yes, we'll do that, and then quickly, I know it's been brought up a couple times this evening, um so I appreciate that, just to remind um board members that questions and inquiries to employees should be facilitated through me, um if there is an emergency for some reason, feel free to reach out, but let me know, CC me, um the department heads are great, that if they're contacted, they let me know, um but I just wanna be sure that um you know, the belief is that people receive an email, and I mean, I'm one of them, but I'm always available. Uh the belief is that people receive an email from someone in this room, and they feel they have to drop what they're doing, respond to it, get information, provide this, pro- and quite frankly, when that happens outside of the sort of normal Monday through Friday hours, I I I wanna make sure there's a work-life balance, that employees should not be expected to respond. Uh so that's why, you know, if I feel it's urgent, if I don't have the answer, I will ask them at the first opportunity and get back to you all with information.
Hmm.
I also think it's important that, um and I need to do a better job of this, that when one of you asks for something, all of you should be getting that response, so you can all see what information is going through.
Hmm.
Um because quite frankly, again, it's, you're not one person, you're one-fifth of that, so I will start doing a better job of facilitating all of the responses to the board when I'm getting asked questions.
Hmm. Hmm.
You know, I mean, obviously, if it's a benign matter of a time of something or, fine, but anything with substance, I will be sure that you are all aware of what information is going to one board member.
Hmm. Hmm.
Just so that if it comes up in a meeting, someone doesn't say, where did that come from, um so I will do a better job of that as well, but um I appreciate you all sort of trying, and I've had the same conversation with the employees, um it's a change from the way it's been done here in the past, I get that, but um the same thing, they should not be reaching out directly to board members, there there should be a flow of information, um so that I know what's being discussed, and then everybody here knows what's being discussed, so um those are, and that's everything I have for you tonight.
That's great.
Okay, um and we got through all the minutes, um correspondence, the only thing I wanna just comment on, and I'll ask if anybody has, uh is the policies that, these are policies Denise found
Does that make sense? Let's see, please.
sort of behind the website, they aren't published, but there are approved policies, but some of them, as I read them, are a little dated, so it's not a necessarily next meeting kind of thing, but I, you know, I think we should be reviewing some of them, especially the older ones, to see if they're still relevant, if there's some language in there, I think, just is outdated, and um so um that's why I asked to have them in there, so you could take a look at them, and um I don't know what our timing is for, it sounds like we just put a lot of things into the next meeting, so maybe not the next meeting, but um just, so, and.
Yes, I see one thing exactly on this is what triggered me, and I actually already asked Denise, because I thought it would be helpful, as sort of the new member, uh that you know, some sort of introductory binder of, you know, what you need would be really great, so if we could also think about that as we're finding all of these
Yeah.
uh policies from from a decade ago that we sort of helped think about, you know, when people step on the board, facilitating it, y'all have been really great to sort of help me get to to speed, and uh Denise has been fantastic answering many stupid questions over hours, so I wanted to make sure I I thank you for that of of all the really dumb questions of like, so what happens if this happens? Um so I just wanna say.
We all like that binder.
Yeah, that'd be.
They're, I mean, you would see, they're now on our website, so things that you approve are on the website, um anything that this board approves will be under the selectmen
Well.
policies, and then also the respective boards, so the HR policies are in two places, um we will be putting together sort of a hard copy, I I said the same thing to Zach when I came in, and um I asked uh the former administrative assistant about a policy, and she says, oh, I think they passed one. Well, do you have it? No, I mean, there's no, there's nothing, there's no, I mean, yes, we stumbled upon these policies, um the um the surplus policy, apparently there was one, no one has copies of it, so I said the same thing to Joyce, as as policies are being approved, print them, put them in a binder,
Yeah.
start a table of contents that can be updated, so we have something to refer to.
Hmm, yeah.
Right, right, right.
I just, you know, that was a, that was a challenge, was not not so much creating the policies, we did that occasionally, uh more in the early years of my tenure than in the later, but the follow-through and the keeping it, and it just, it just didn't happen, I just wanna say, though, that just because a policy exists doesn't mean that we need to
Hmm.
keep it or follow it or not change it, there was one of those policies, I wrote a good part of it, after you, I had forgotten about the, I wrote all the stuff about the gifts. Um you know, I would never write a policy for this board like that, that it's way too detailed, it's so detailed and so long, it begs not to be implemented. Um and that had to do with the lack of follow-through, which I don't expect from the current staff.
Hmm. Right.
But I I do have a problem, though, if there's policies, even if, I mean, presuming that we find them, and we feel like they're not appropriate anymore, we should then pitch them and say officially, we're pitching them, or we're gonna edit the heck out of it or whatever, um
Read them.
Yes. Yeah.
because I don't wanna just ignore policies, that's just a bad precedent for like, good, good policy is good policy.
Right, but. Can I say one thing on that, you know, and as a former general counsel of a state agency that, you know, I was a big policy guy.
Yes. Uh-huh.
But you can't take people to task too much about policies that weren't followed, or you need to be a bit forgiving. They they are policies for a reason, they're they're not laws or regs, because you want some flexibility.
Right. Hmm.
The main thing I always think is that you're making the effort, that you are at a periodic basis, while you're keeping your policies collected, you're periodically reviewing them, and when you do that, you're gonna find that for the past few years, you haven't been doing X. You don't beat anybody up for that.
No, right.
You just.
Looking forward.
If you wanna do X, you start doing X, if you don't wanna do X anymore, you change the policy, um but you just keep that process, it's it's more about the process, I think, than the piece of paper.
Right, no, and and we wanna look forward, we don't, we don't need to look back and wonder why. Um any other comments on correspondence? Otherwise? Motion? To move into executive session? Oh, that's right, we have executive session, totally forgot.
Should be quick, but yes, we have an executive session.
Okay, all right, um yeah, so is that.
Do you wanna read it?
Yeah, okay. Madam Chair, I move to convene an executive session, um you're gonna need to say that we're not coming out of, well, I guess that's in here, I move to convene an executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A three, for the purpose of reviewing executive session minutes and under section twenty-one A- For the purpose of reviewing executive session minutes and under Section twenty-one A six, for the purpose of considering the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, if the chair declares an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body and to adjourn thereafter.
And to include, I believe, adjourn, um no, I think there's a a staff member that's gonna be part of the discussion on executive session.
Oh, I don't think it has to be in the motion, but I'll say, um.
Doesn't it?
Not in the motion, no.
Oh, okay, okay, all right.
Let's second the the motion.
All right, um so roll call for um approval of executive session, right, to open, right?
Yes.
Mm-hmm, Courtney?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
No one says yes. We are in executive session, so folks who are on the call, um that are not to be part of the executive session, I would ask that you sign off. Uh Kathy Sfera, I believe, is staying on, is there anybody else that's, no, just Kathy.
That should not be anybody else.
And our town administrator, obviously, thank you for coming.